Good morning. It is Saturday, March 23rd, and 8:33 a.m. We're going to call this meeting of the Louisville City Council to order, and we do have a quorum. We do have the opportunity for public comment at these events. To speak on an item on this agenda in person, you must sign up to speak before the meeting begins with the city secretary. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Written public comments may be submitted through ecomments. To access ecomments, we do have a website that you can get that on and utilize the ecomments link on the far right-hand side on our City of Louisville page. You can reach out to the city secretary as well. Ecomments are typically, or ecomments will be accepted until 5:00 p.m. the day prior to this meeting. Thomas, do we have any ecomments?
Okay.
We're going to go ahead and move into the workshop session. We have, today's agenda will be facilitator introduction, overview of the day's goals, continuation of city council discussion on strategic focus areas for 2024, 2025, and/or the budget calendar from March 22, 2024 if necessary. Presentation on effective governance with related city council discussions, setting 2024, 25 strategic focus areas, and retreat recap and takeaways. If necessary, staff will make or continue presentations on the following topics in no particular order to provide context for related city council discussion. Those topics are affordable housing, justice equity, diversity, inclusion goals, mall redevelopment, the Lake District, Old Town Development, employee recruitment, development, retention, artificial intelligence effects on employees, 10-minute walk to a park goals, athletic field study, nature center, city infrastructure and facilities, fleet assessments, utility priorities, east side sewer study, business 121 corridor planning, Louisville beautification initiatives, public engagement, and economic trends and budget calendar. With that, I think we are going to turn this over to Mr. Dan Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome. Good to be with you all. This is the second day. Mayor, great recap here of certainly the topics that we are going to cover today and certainly covered yesterday. What a full day yesterday. I don't know about you, my ears were ringing as I left here with just an amazing amount of information and briefing. And even as we did our best in that regard, found that we are going to need to carry a couple of those topics into this morning, and that's just fine. But to get us started here, I thought I'd do just a quick warm-up with you all. It'll be a chance also from Matt to get a confirmation on mic test because each of you are going to have a chance to speak. And Mayor, if I could, I want to just pass these around real quick and ask you each to do one of two things that's on that card. This is a business card, and this is actually going to be your chance, if you would, to write down the name of the first paid job you ever had. And then down at the bottom, if you would jot down on that whether or not were instructions Take a minute, jot that down. You go back in the wayback machine, right? Way, way back, right?
Easy.
No, no, no. Claire said it first. Claire said it first. And Patrick started yesterday, Kristen, so I know you're writing, but I want to lead off with you here in just a minute. So again, punch in the mic, that'll also seriously let Matt do a check that way, and we'll be good to go.
Okay, so you're wanting to know what the name of the company was? It was my first paid job?
Yeah, and or the job itself. Somewhere is legitimate, so name and company or just the name of the job?
Okay. I actually taught gymnastics at Tumbletown in Waukesha, Texas. And were instructions included? I put a maybe box.
Good on that. And you communicated well with what you just said. I understand that. I understand that option. That's great. Now, Brandon?
My first paid job was, my uncle had an old dog, my great uncle, and I was cleaning dog poop for about 20 bucks. So no instructions were needed.
Some things you just figure out. Thank you, Brandon. Ronnie?
My first paid job, I was on a bicycle, and I was a paper girl for Dallas Morning News.
You were carrier, one of the carriers.
Me and my brother and a couple of other friends from the neighborhood. So we had to split it. We split the pay. But it took us that long to do it.
Knocked it out, though. So instructions included?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, very good. Very good. Mayor?
You know, it's interesting when you hear what people's first jobs are, and then you start looking at how they make decisions. You kind of can see some parallels and how we're creatures of our history. With that being said, my first job, I was a waiter for the Yuma Landing, which is a restaurant in my hometown. Instructions-ish were included, but I did learn that my attitude and my pay are directly related.
Ah, powerful first lesson. That's great. William?
Okay, so I'm from the Midwest, so I still remember this. It's as vivid as it was 1982, 13 years old. So detasseling corn, probably don't even know what that is. So rode my bike down to the grade school at 13, 4:00 a.m. in the morning. And so basically, you're on a little carrier, and they take you down to the corn fields, and you're taking the tassels off the corn to basically pollinate the corn. So yeah, that's, I remember that very vividly.
Yes, that's a vivid one. Good. Thank you for that. Bob?
Well, I did mow lawns and got paid, but my first job that I actually got a paycheck for was I was working construction in farm silo repair and swimming pool construction. And the instructions were all verbal and just, you know, grab that bag, shovel this sand.
Cryptically short and only, just in time instructions, right?
Yeah, just in time, right, yes.
Thank you, Bob. Patrick?
So like most everybody here, I think I had a series of kind of, you know, go out there with a lawn mower, push it around.
Absolutely.
Not a lot of instruction around that, just don't mow down the flowers, I guess. But the first thing I considered to be a real job would be a bagger at HEB Grocery back in the day. So yeah, they were actually trained pretty well. They trained very, very well out there for all the different levels, but baggers especially because that was the entry point into the entire company.
Wow, yeah, yeah, that's great. Good. Well, as Mayor said, it's always an adventure kind of thing, is kind of what was that first job? And like I said, were instructions included? We'll talk about instructions including later on in the morning here, but thanks for that involvement. Matt got his mic checks, and we're all good to go here. We did mention that, like I said, a great agenda yesterday, went through several items. And if you recall, and if you were doing your note-taking, and I want to pause on that and say, orange sheet, note-taking, nine items. Hopefully, you'll peruse that and see that you have some good notes on those items, which you would want to now lift out would be the salmon-colored sheet you have. It has two entries on it, and that really is, in fact, coincidentally, the agenda, right, that's kind of interesting, the salmon and the pink are kind of, but the salmon-colored sheet. Coral, thank you. Thank you for that, Ronnie. That sheet will be helpful to you just to have handy as well, because those are coincidentally the two items that we're going to lead off today with. They are ones that we did not have a chance, and we were all kind of to the point where we were full up, and we did not want to start tackling those yesterday. And we'll turn it over now in a minute to Claire to do that, but just say, again, your note-taking on that, hopefully good note-taking on your green sheets as well, and then certainly another briefing after that from yesterday where we'll cover some of the budget and calendar and budget planning process and economic setting for that. Following that, then we'll kind of get on into this discussion about governance and then certainly get into the construction project for, a construction effort for this coming year's work plan. So any questions or thoughts about this as we get ready to go? Okay, with that, Claire, let me turn it over to you. You need a clicker.
Okay, Mayor and Council. Before we get started, I would really love for you to get into your worksheet that's in your purple folder. And there's a breakdown of a SWOT analysis. Many of you have probably done one, you've seen it as part of our budget process, but I would like you to spend the next couple minutes on your own, writing down what you believe in. And trust me, if you have your PowerPoint presentation, you already have a cheat sheet, which is what staff's SWOT analysis was. But I'm interested to make sure that staff understands what you think our strengths are, our weaknesses, our opportunities, and our threats with regard to beautification of Louisville. That way, we can kind of make sure we're on the same page with you guys. So if you don't mind taking a little bit of time to do that, and Mayor, when you're
Counsel, do we need a little more time? All right, hearing no objections to that, we'll go ahead and keep moving forward. Claire?
Okay, great. So I'm going to flip over to what staff had identified as strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And sometimes what is a weakness and a threat, an opportunity and a strength, those things can sometimes mesh together and overlap, so there's no right or wrong answer here. We just wanted to have that conversation. So I'd be interested, Counsel, if you would just express to us what you believe are our greatest strengths. If you, Mayor, if you wouldn't mind going around the horn, and we can kind of get some input on the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats.
Since Ronnie was telling me it's really early for her, we can go ahead and not start with her. Patrick, or anybody to my right, you guys want to kind of kick that off?
I'll jump in, and I'm always fascinated by this kind of process, to see how people think. These are very specific items. Mine tend to be much more broad and overarching. So we're looking, and we just want to do strengths at first, I would want to do?
Yes.
Okay. So the commitment to staff, I think, to the projects around beautification is a big one. I think that's a great, a great strength that we have. And part and parcel of that, counsel support for the overall projects, and we're united in that support. So we all have different things that we believe in strongly, but when it comes to things like beautification and the betterment, how does he present, I think we present a pretty united front in that and support of staff. And I think we also have great resident involvement, so we have all kinds of boards and commissions. I was on the airport for a while, definitely a big part of the beautification of making Louisville present that we wanted to present. So I think resident involvement is strong, and I'll leave it at that.
Who'd like to be next?
Certainly in the strength category is all our plans, our standards, and obviously the people we have here, the talented people we have doing their jobs to put this thing together. I mean, that's crucial. Harmful, so largely built out, obviously.
Let's just stay with...
Oh, okay, strengths. Plans, standards, and talented people.
Okay.
Okay. I think we have the determination to do it, and we have the willingness to work together to accomplish our tasks.
Anybody else want to chime in?
I think that we have, the team and the makeup of our team, this family here at the City of Louisville, it works so good together. And in the energy that comes along with it and the passion, it's not a job.
Bob took some of the things I had, but just a different take on. I think we have the will to get it done, the capability, and we have the ability for the team to focus to get the job done.
Mayor, I don't have anything that hasn't already been said.
I think our volunteerism, it could be greater, but the volunteer corps that we have is pretty amazing, and I think that's critical. The other thing, I think, we're very clear on where we are as a first ring suburb. We don't have as many of the controls or rules that some of our younger communities have been able to create. And so we're, I think, very clear in where we are and what it takes to overcome that.
Okay. If you guys wouldn't mind opining on the weaknesses?
Weaknesses next. We're going to go through all four of them, Ronnie.
Yes.
Kristen, you mind starting?
Sure. I'll start. So I just have two. We didn't have a whole lot of time, so mine are more broad as well. But I, first thing I wrote was, you know, we're limited by the time that we have, staff's time, to get everything organized and to look at new things and programs and all the things. And we're also limited by the amount of money that we have available.
So yeah, I agree with Kristen. I have funding on there, but also a weakness is the relationship with TechStop and their assistance for cities, especially on state roads.
They got my top two already, so we're going to keep it short and keep moving.
Okay.
To go back to we are clear about where we are, those are definitely our weaknesses. Code, you know, 40 years, 60 years of history of what was prioritized and not, and we have to, we have to be able to overcome that or figure ways to incentivize as opposed to using a hammer.
I was going to, just basically some of the same things, largely, we're largely built out, and certainly the TechStop relationship with the trash and the lights is a big deal to me.
Might have been taken the lack of personnel and time for accomplishing things and the aging that we've, aging of our, the entire city, so.
I'll just reiterate, budgetary constraints encode as well, and I know we've talked about, for example, we have an old movie theater that is certainly not beautiful. I realize it meets code, but it's boarded up right now, and it's just, those sorts of things keep us from being the city that we'd like to present as.
Okay.
All right, let's go ahead and move on to opportunities. Brandon, you mind if we start with you?
Sure, and I'm sure a lot of people are going to come up with this one, but I think a lot of our opportunities are involved in leveraging our relationships with our residents, businesses, and nonprofits to actually help us with the beautification, also to help us by using the app to report problem areas so that we can get on them a little faster. And I think we know the opportunity to create a fully immersive program that includes all those groups would help us improve.
I just went blank. Go ahead. The mall area, that's huge, and the partnership and this new owner wanting to work with us on that. And it's actually the community's willingness to buy in on the vision that we have out there, albeit it's the 80/20 thing, that you get 20% that actually get out there. But that 20% of volunteerism and partnership that we have out there, they're like times two with their energy and passion levels. So that's a great opportunity for us.
I think we have opportunities with LASD and with our businesses and maybe UNT, some of those bigger partnerships to create, you know, whether that's improved green space, other opportunities where we can maybe change, change how we do things and create, you know, as new spaces are built or renovated, create different aesthetics or different focuses for those folks.
I was just going to reiterate what we had, pretty much what we had yesterday, 121 mall on Lake Park.
I think the citizen, citizens' involvement is what I see is a very good opportunity. We have a lot of, a lot of people who are willing to participate and work at it.
So more of the same, I think. So, and this is odd because I listed helpful as resident involvement, but it's also an opportunity. Seems like we have the same 100 or so residents that are involved in everything, and they take very excited about it, which is fantastic. I love that level of involvement. And I know we have probably scores of newsletters and websites and things that go out, and so it's there for looking, but how do we get people to actually engage in that? That's the opportunity that we have. And then external organizations as well, so just read it, and we hit upon that a little bit with the, with the athletic fields, yesterday's conversation.
Kristen?
I mean, beyond what has already been said, I wrote something that was more specific, which was the Park Alliance.
And then we'll go ahead and do threats. William, would you mind?
Actually, I took one of your weaknesses and turned it into a threat. I'm not a big fan of HOA, so I wouldn't say that's a weakness, in my opinion.
For threats, I had funding as one threat, just finding the, finding the funding, and citizens' naysayers are, I think, a set, are a threat. We have social media trolls that can be a threat.
So somewhere, I think, you know, getting drawn off sides, it's really easy to chase everything, be reactionary, so, you know, stay focused and try not to get drawn off sides. And I'm probably as guilty as anybody about being reactionary there. I think we have a threat in the continual erosion of local control in Austin, and we need to be vigilant about that. And then overall, there's optics evolve, so, you know, why can't we do this, but we can do that? There's a lot of misunderstanding about what budgets can be used for what sorts of things. So that goes back, I guess, to community involvement as well, but that's a threat that we have, just the overall optics, how we allocate funds.
Wonderful. Oh, I'm sorry. Forgot about...
Kristen, we forgot the other half.
I said TechStop corridors, we have little bit of little control, privately owned property that's grandfathered in, unengaged public, and then the state legislation.
Like Kristen, I think everything has kind of been touched on. I would just comment on the misinformed trolls. They're not much of an issue. I heard a mayor say, you know, social media is not the real world, and people got up in arms, and they liked to post that back, but it's not. If you want to say something on Facebook, that's great, but if you want to fix something, come to the city, come to, come to the staff, come to an elected official, and we can work to fix it instead of complaining about stuff.
In today's property tax environment, we have these different entities that are, it's not a competing, but it's, it's citizen fatigue at the ballot box when it comes to some of these, this funding and stuff. And all the entities are trying to grab at their piece of pie. And citizens are, they're fatigued. They're tired of it.
I think another threat is, we know what we're trying to do, we have our internal language, but making sure that it's understood by residents and what, we make that translation clear. So it can be a threat, you know? People love to pick like two words out of something and say, oh, that's why we can't do it, or that's why they're awful. And instead, how do we, how do we counter that with good, just good messaging and, you know, get people focused on outcomes, not just sitting in armchair quarterbacking?
Thank you. Really appreciate it. Actually, I think it's, Patrick, when you said it was, you guys were, your ideas were more high-level, I think that's appropriate, because counsel is focused on the policy, and we should be focused drilling down more on the operation. So I think really looking at the list we have up here, and I won't read them off, obviously, but to look at this, this is us drilling down on, I'm happy to know that we're very similarly aligned. And the reason why that's really helpful is because we started, we always start with the end in mind and figure, okay, let's identify what the problem is and where we should put resources. I'm giving this presentation rather than one of the other directors because we worked as an entire team together to come up with a plan of action, which was what the direction from counsel was to me, was we want to see some movement in this, some growth, and we want to, we want it not to just be one task, we want to have an overarching strategy. So that's what I'm going to present with you today. The categories of our initiatives that we're going to cover are going to be engagement, enforcement, maintenance, place-making, and advocacy and partnership. First up, from engagement, and many of these will have budgetary attachments to it. I won't have them specified here. I just wanted to make sure this is something you want to go forward with, and then we will bring that as a budget package to you guys next year. Some of them, we are actually, in this first one, we're rolling out immediately, and we were able to do so mid-year. So from engagement, we have regular volunteer opportunities in the city with other nonprofits, but there is not, from a cleanup perspective, one that's run from the city that is ongoing, that every single citizen knows on the first Saturday of every month, or whatever that ends up being, that they can just show up and volunteer. I think there's a hunger in our community to be more connected, but I don't think that we, because of staffing levels, have in the past been able to provide that. So the other thing is making sure that is streamlined for volunteers. So if you are a church, you will know that this is the time to show up. You don't have to plan anything, you just know, you just know you contact the city, this is the day, this is where you're going to show up, and this is how many volunteers I'm going to bring to the table. Obviously, we have to do, we have to work on the background checks and stuff like that, but it's a lot less hard when you're just cleaning up stuff than if you're working with kids in thrive or something like that. So we need to make sure that process is streamlined. And we'll work with schools, churches, and businesses for that. The opportunity there is that we have, our sustainability position has transitioned to an urban forester position. When our sustainability manager took another position in another community, we revamped that. The urban forester position, you've heard your parks director talk about the importance of that from the tree canopy and our healthy infrastructure plan initiatives, but this is an opportunity also to have that position handle this, this workload. Now, there, and we'll talk a little bit more about our partnership with Keep Louisville Beautiful. The urban forester will be the primary responsible party, but Keep Louisville Beautiful, we can't leave them out of the mix either, and we'll talk about that, that partnership. By having those regular volunteer opportunities, that allows us to unlock another opportunity, which is municipal court referrals. So right now, municipal court, if you have an indigent defendant who can't pay for their tickets, they can work that off through community volunteerism. But because the court doesn't have something that they can, that is regularly scheduled, there's nothing that they can do, and they don't have a volunteer coordinator for cleanups in our community, it's not able to, they're not able to refer them right now. So by us just starting this urban forester position and having those regular volunteer opportunities, municipal... opportunities, municipal court can then refer. Yes, sir?
How do we make sure that that, well, I get that it is repayment for speeding or whatever that issue is. My concern on that type of work, though, is that it's seen as punishment, and I want to make sure that we're having that conversation with folks, that we're grateful that they're doing this work. Like, as a kid, you know, my punishment was to go mow the lawn. It's like, so I hate mowing the lawn, right? So that's like, I don't want to, I have zero interest in maintaining my lawn because I hate that. That's punishment. So I'm hopeful that this is seen and positioned as, it's not punishment, it's an opportunity. And oh, by the way, you're going to get something bonus out of it as well. So I don't know if I've got an answer, but it's just, it's a concern that something that is beneficial to the community could be perceived as a punishment by the individual.
Yes, sir. We'll look at that. The other thing to note is that the court would not be saying this is the only thing that you could volunteer for. So they would still have volunteer opportunities with other nonprofits. So the person will still need, get to choose where they want to spend their time. So you're likely not going, if someone would rather be stocking CCA's pantry, that's their choice as well, right? So this is just an additional opportunity for that.
And maybe some of it's just as simple as framing, is like, this is, you know, these are your opportunities for restitution. Pick one that you think you would enjoy. Maybe it's just that simple.
Not use the word restitution.
Well, whatever, yeah, something like that. Whatever we have to do. I mean, I know there's like bare minimum language that's required, but is there a way that we can maybe frame it a little bit better, that we'd like to give you the opportunity to pick something where you feel like you're giving back?
Yep.
I'm going to add, that's a great idea. I really like that. I think this might be an opportunity to go through and with whoever is running that program, that's a chance for them to sell, say, "Thank you so much. Your work is really appreciated. We'd love it if you came out here more because we need more people like you to join." So I think there's a sell opportunity to soften the, it's not a punishment, but it's an opportunity to serve, so.
The other thing to note is, it's not just indigent clients, it's also teen court deferrals. So you can also get your teens more engaged in your community as well. But I got your notes. Thank you. Also, you got, council had approved us authorizing volunteer time off. So every year, the city manager gets to determine where the focus of that volunteer time can be spent for our employees. And because of the need for beautification, and I know that's been something that's been interested, council's been interested in, this year, and I would foresee next year as well, would be focused on cleanup. So it's partnering with Keep Louisville Beautiful, with Adopt a Spot, and directors will be starting to plan those team-building exercises.
I like this. Keep Louisville, I love the citywide cleanup day. I just think it needs to be at two different times of the year. I would love to see an additional one somehow take off.
So I think there are two, but I think one is more publicized than the other one, maybe. But we're going to go through the, providing better publicity on it as well.
Claire, I have a quick question about this. When I see VTO programs, I see them manifest in one of a couple of ways. One is, this appears to be more department-directed, but I also see self-directed a lot as well. So as long as it's within the umbrella of this, you're going to focus on beautification, and you have a cause that's dear to your heart, you can also use that time for that. What are the thoughts around those two types of VTO?
Yeah, so you, as an employee, you can choose yourself where you want to go. This is just an opportunity, we've already started the VTO program. You're not seeing it take off as fast as you would think, and I think it's because our employees need pre-planned things to plug into, right? And I think they also want to do things from a team-building perspective. But no, absolutely, an individual, if they are really passionate, can go out and use their VTO just on their own time, with their own passion. Yes, within Louisville. The VTO has to be spent on work in Louisville to benefit Louisville. Any other questions on that before I go forward? Good discussion. Okay. Next for engagement is stormwater credit education, and I think this is something that Councilwoman Green has been harping on, that's a negative word, has been, touting is important. There you go. So for stormwater credits, we have various ways that businesses can get stormwater credit. But the, this one is really focused, especially from an education standpoint on code officers, and also for economic development from a business retention standpoint, mainly because we don't have very many businesses that are currently using their stormwater credits. I think a lot of them don't know it's available. And although I would love to receive all of their stormwater fees to be able to use for long-range projects, at the same time, they're leaving money on the table. And if, one, for example, is parking lot sweeping. So you can get credit if you have your parking lot on a regular sweeping schedule. I think if you were to look at the list of weaknesses that staff had identified as some of the commercial properties need some upkeep, better upkeep on their property. So if code officers are going to start going out there, and then we'll talk about that from an enforcement standpoint, and start focusing on the commercial enforcement, well, there's also a way to, at the same time, educate those businesses and say, "But yeah, you may have to put some more money into maintenance, but here's a way you can recover, recoup some of that from a credit." We want to also explore, and I don't have the answer to this right away, but gamifying cleanups throughout the community, to add healthy competition between neighborhoods, schools, or individuals to compete against one another, who can pick up the most litter. So Jim Proci has been in another community where literally there were competitions on amount of weight of trash that neighborhoods had picked up, the city had picked up, those types of things. So we want to explore that some more. And then code volunteers. Originally, this was actually listed as code Rangers, but Jackie Davis hates that name. And so I promised him I would change that name, but I still called it out. He doesn't like the name Code Rangers because there were cities in the past that would have members of the public that would get in city-issued vehicles and would have the authority to issue notices of violations. And within the first week of this one particular city came back, and they had 300 notices of violations, and 75% of them were not correct. They were not actually violations. And so it created havoc within the community. And so that's not what we're saying with code volunteers. What we are saying is, this is, for those who were on council at the time, we had a group called Neighbors Leading Neighbors early on. This is somewhat like that. If you were actually in those meetings with the neighbors leading neighbors, it was really members of the community who wanted to beautify their neighborhood a lot. That was their primary interest. And they were very engaged with our code enforcement officers, but this was before we had the city app. So this is an opportunity to get volunteers in our community to really just use their phone and be an advocate in the community. What we have created, our app, is exceptional, and it allows us to quickly keep track of these code violations. You heard from Chris Lee about how we're trying to use AI to better make it more efficient, but it's a central place for us to be able to capture all that data and then also to be able to run reports off of it. So we want to push our community towards that. And I think it was Councilman Meredith, who was one of you, I can't remember, was saying that that was something you want to, no, it was Councilman Jones who said, "Bring them more towards the app." I think you said that.
Yes, I try. Once a month, I try to remember to bring up the R. Lewisville, Texas app that everyone should download, and I use it fairly regularly. The one piece to this, I love the idea. I would say we need to couple that with, like, you talked about the other, I guess, municipality that had problems with people miscoding things. You may want to also have, use videos, either on the city YouTube, on the cable television spectrum still doesn't work, so that people can see, okay, like, here's what we're getting, here's what you should be reporting, to kind of help guide people along to make sure they're doing it the right way. So we're not getting increased information that's not good.
Yeah. And actually, I'm glad you brought that up because I had written there, I just didn't touch on it, was the training aspect of it, because it's important those volunteers are trained by our code officers on what to look for. Anything else on this one?
I was just going to say, before we move forward, I like the idea of engaging the community to help with cleanup. What I think we could also do is, or how do we establish a love for our city with the general public and focus on litter prevention? Because there's always going to be litter, we're going to need to do cleanups, but the idea is, if I care about my neighborhood and my city, I'm not going to be throwing trash out the window or throwing my trash on the ground when I'm going for a walk. I'm going to pick up after my dog. How do we, what can we do to help establish that sentiment within the community?
You know, it's interesting, it's an interesting discussion, because one of the things we had with engagement early on was, well, maybe we need to do a giant public campaign, communication campaign, where we're trying to come up with a logo, and we're trying to come up with a catch line. And when we looked at it, talking with James especially, you're seeing that there's not a great effectiveness for those types of programs. And so you could end up spending, we could hire a consulting company to do that, it's just not, I don't think that the payoff will be what we want in those regards. So to me, and I'm interested in what the rest of council thinks on this too, but to me, I think it's, the more people are engaged in our community and they love our community, they'll take care of it. I also think there's a hard part of, when you have, what you're trying to achieve right there, I think, is like cutting it off at the source, right? Everything here seems to be reactionary. It's like, how do you stop people from doing those things? And I think it's also hard when you look at the, when you go back and you look at some of the threats and weaknesses, but threats, the number of state roads, so people that don't live in our community are littering in our community. And we have very little control over that maintenance, right? That automatically start, has the community feeling like, well, I don't need to, why do I need to act differently because I'm seeing that? You also have issues, the fact that we have three landfills in Louisville. And so on Business 121, coming towards, coming from Castle Hills into Louisville, there's trash. And that's 100% coming off, it's actually, the interesting thing is, what I think's happening is it's not coming, sometimes it's, they're required to have loads that are like buttoned down, so they can't have trash come off. Sometimes it escapes, and usually you see them with it covered. Maybe it'll be a little bit too full and you'll see some trash coming out. I think a lot of it's when they're leaving the landfill and they don't have it covered anymore, but they have stuff stuck to the bottom, it's floating out then. So that's one of the things we're going to look at too, is, well, is there some way we can regulate that? And is, you know, how do we address the source? But I don't have a good answer for you, other than engagement. I'm interested in council has any other ideas on that.
I appreciate the conversation.
Here's one thing I think we might, I mean, can we go back to the stormwater?
Yes.
I think there's an opportunity here. We're talking about business with stormwater, but I see my neighbors all the time blowing their grass in the street. It's, I mean, it drives me nuts, but I don't know that they understand what that means. I think there's an opportunity here that you could maybe tie, sort of tie these all three together and do a campaign out there, say, "Hey, if you're blowing your leaves and your trash in the street, you need to understand what the ramifications of that are." You know, my wife and I do, but I don't know that everybody else knows that.
To go along with him, there's a lot of landscape companies too. I was, I'm not sure if it's our contractor, but on Purnell, coming from Railroad Street Thursday, they're all up and down Purnell, close to the curb and stuff, mowing all that area, blowing it into Purnell. And with not a thought in the world, but I see that everywhere I go.
It's a, I see it, I've seen it in my job as a Lyft driver. I had a family in the car a couple of weeks ago. The one kid was playing with the rear window, so I locked, I did the kid lock on the window so they couldn't roll the window down. Well, the mother said, "Hey, could you roll my window down?" And then she said, "I need to throw this pizza out." And I said, "No, I'm not going to let you throw that pizza out the window." She, I mean, you know, it's one of those things where people, it's a, it's a, people are, yeah, people, you know, people are just insensitive to the problem. And I've seen it, it's happened to me several other times when I had people in the car.
I had a thought, since we're talking apps and spending money on marketing campaigns that don't necessarily move the needle. Do the apps provide us with a GPS location? And if so, can that inform where we place trash cans or where we place, here's a bag for pooper scoopers? Or just thought that we could be maybe, just, let's, okay, let's just assume, this is going to be a hotspot for garbage for the rest of the world. It's going to be a hotspot, I mean, especially when you're talking dense locations down here in urban Old Town. There's going to be particular preferred locations for the pets. I'm pretty sure Kristen can name a couple of hotspots for that. So is there a way to just say, "You know what? This is where that's going to happen. We're just going to put a bag station here." So just a thought.
I would agree with that. The former place I worked at, this school, they shut down for a couple of years while the neighborhood took it over, and it was their little dog park. The school just gave up. They just put, they put the trash, you know, containers out there with the dog stuff, and, okay, well, it's a dog park now, or this, we're just going to accept it.
I will say that that might help, but my observation is that I have seen a whole lot of people not pick up their mess with a doggy bag station 10 feet away. But it does help.
And then we can, like, use the cameras to publicly shame, no, sorry, never mind, moving on.
We'll put flock cameras out for dog pooper scoopers.
DNA testing?
We'd probably call them flop cameras at that point.
So from an enforcement standpoint, it's making sure also that employees have full ownership of their community appearance. I think there are some teams that community appearance is important to, but I also think that there are some teams that that is not in there, like, for example, finance department, finance department's not, they're not coming to work going, "I have to," my core responsibilities are cleanup of our community, right? But at the same time, every single employee, just, I think it's setting the expectations and accountability that we're all in this together and to make sure that we are reporting things. So to that end, if you see something, say something. We have created a, it is only internal right now because we have the app for the public, but we've created a cleanup hotline for our internal staff. And we will, we are going to give you guys the phone number because you are a part of our team, so council members can also use that. It is in your folder. But basically, it's a phone number, so you can always use the app, but sometimes I find it difficult when I'm commuting or if I'm getting into my vehicle and I'm about to start going somewhere, I don't want you to drive and text or drive and call or anything, comply with all laws. But I have found this to be an easier tool for me. So I'm probably the highest user of this phone number, but I just call and I'm like, "Hey, at the corner of Valley Ridge and Summit, there's some high weeds," or "There is a bunch of junk that needs to be cleaned up," and that's all you need to do. And you just leave a voicemail. It's a recording, it will turn into a digital message that then gets right now, and this is why we're doing it internally, it goes straight to one person, which is this woman right behind me. And then she is basically the operator that sends it to the correct department. Now, you heard Chris Lee talk about how we're trying to use AI to figure out a way. Right now, we're just testing that to see if there's a way to make Melissa's job easier, but right now, that's what's happening. And then we're sending it to the right department. Then that department enters it into our app so that we actually have still a correct logging of that information, and we can keep that as a data point. But I wanted to make this available to you guys too. So we are having team members starting to use this. I've made this available to all of the city employees this last week at Coffee with Claire, but I'm going to be sending this out to them right after retreat as well.
So a quick question about that. And I understand the intent of not having people text and drive, but people will try to text this number because texting is just such a common thing to do these days. Is there a text option for this number? It'll work as well? Fantastic. Thank you.
I am, what you're, it's funny that you said that, see it, say it, because I've written down here, see it, sack it. Because so many people, they're walking around, they want to get on social media or they want to call about the trash that's right there when they're walking right by it. So if you see it, sack it. I mean, it's real easy to put a little effort into your community to pick up just a little bit.
Also wanted to talk about Lewisville's enforcement philosophy because I want to make sure council is on board with if we turn up the heat a little bit on, from a code enforcement standpoint. So our general philosophy with code enforcement is, and this is not just, when I say code enforcement, I don't mean the code enforcement team that just reports to Jackie Davis. What I'm talking about is all code enforcement. If, when I first came to the city and I met with fire prevention and they're doing enforcement, building inspection, pretty much it's, it's a philosophy that's been from the root of history in Lewisville, which I don't think is a bad philosophy, but it's, we want to just achieve compliance. So we're willing to work with you and give you a lot of leeway so that you got, so that as long as you're making efforts towards something, we want to work with you. And we're trying to avoid ticketing, if possible. So I'm not suggesting that we go straight to ticketing. Obviously, there's statutory requirements that we have to give certain amount of notices. But if we are going to start dialing it up a little bit with regard to, and we'll go through the next slide, which will talk about the timeframes for notifications and things. I want to make sure council's comfortable with that. Our focus also over the next year, and we'll go, we'll go through the timeframes on tickets, but focus over the next year is going to be commercial property maintenance. This is where we're seeing that we have growth opportunities. Substandard structures, litter abatement, cleanup of construction sites and replacement of dead landscaping. And then the other thing that's interesting is that commercial buildings are, they all, most of them, except the ones that are exceedingly old, have engineering site plans and landscaping plans, which ties in what landscaping material they have and they have to maintain on their property. So as things die, they're not in compliance unless they keep maintaining that. So the difficulty, and I've seen this right down the street from my house at an apartment complex, is that we made them comply and they put in the same plants that they had in their engineering site plan, but those are not, with weather changes, those are not, they, they lasted two years. And so it's looking at if we need to have a code change that gives staff the authorization to, hey, if you're, maybe you don't plant back the same non-water wise plants, but gives them the option to replace it with something that is more water wise, so that you don't have them continuously dying year after year. Any questions on any of those things?
Just a quick comment. I'm all, I'm all for enforcement. Moving a little bit away from the cleanup, parking is one of the things that drives me crazy, especially in Old Town. But I think the one, the one add in that we could have is, like, especially for commercial properties, is utilizing the, with the message, we're kind of reaching out to like the senior homes, but the apartments we can reach out to as well. I know we talked to them about like recycling and things like that, adding a component to educate them. And maybe we can tie in our native planning so they can actually put in native plants. I'm all for letting staff, giving staff leeway to get things done. There's no need for us to be involved in every, every decision that's made. But giving them options that will, will last, so they won't have to keep going back. But, you know, and for any businesses, make sure we tie in like the, the chamber so we can educate and let them know that we're going down this path of more enforcement so that we can, and why we're doing it. Because invariably, they're going to be people and they're, oh, we're trying to get fines. No. We want, we want to get people to do the right thing and follow the rules. We just have to educate them and push them along, but we have to have the carrot and the stick. So I just think that's, just to, just to add on the education piece as we, as we become more enforcement heavy.
Great. Thank you.
I would say too that we need to, a little more focus on the construction sites and the cleanup. I'm used to a more, like, every day there, maybe they got a street sweeper kind of thing. I'm seeing that they're, they're not doing that. It's, they're just kind of leaving it out there. So I think a little bit more on that could, would, would help.
Jim and his team are already on that. In the last couple of weeks, that, that has been, we're going to set a new standard for our construction sites.
I mean, even asphalt, make sure if they're cutting the streets, that the asphalt's level with the top of the street.
If you have a specific place you're talking about, will you talk to Jim afterwards? Okay.
I'm going to jump on the, the compliance. Yes, absolutely. People know what's right but they know what's wrong. You caught doing something, pay the, pay the price. I have no problems with, with enhanced enforcement. There might be an opportunity to tie some of this back into the volunteering, to work that ticket off if you like. But yeah, I have no problem stepping up enforcement here.
Just so you guys can see that, since you gave me a good segue, Councilman Kelly. So this is our code enforcement process right now. Obviously, different types of violations require difference, different amount of notification. And the timeframes we give people depend on how big the, the issues are and how fast you can, like a high grass and weeds, well, we would expect you to mow that within seven days versus if you have a Texas transportation code says inoperable vehicles, you require a 30-day notice. So you've got those statutory requirements. But right now, we have a first notice. You do a door, we have been doing a door tag and then that's seven days. And we come back with a second notice. That's when we send regular and certified mail. And then finally, third, is when you have a citation issued. Anywhere in that process, if the property owner calls us and says, hey, I'm working on it, can you give me a little bit more time? We've been very willing to say, okay. Unless there's some other extenuating circumstances, like the neighbors are really up in arms and there's a lot of complaints about something. I will say from a statutory standpoint, we'll just say high grass and weeds, for example, they are only required to give one notice before citation. And we're doing two notices. So just note, note that. The other thing to know is that, one of the things we will be moving for is for repeat violators, we are not going to give the same level of, of notification. I mean, we'll comply with law, but we're going to be more streamlined with regard to pushing them towards citations and doing max fines on those as well, or at least asking that the, the court do max fines.
Before you jump slides, I just have a couple of questions on this one, or, and some comments. One, would there be a way, it's been a while since I've looked at the violation warning. It absolutely looks and sounds like I'm getting a fine. It is very aggressive. I don't think it gives enough, hey, we will work with you if there's an extenuating circumstance. You need to reach out to us ASAP if there is one. I would love to see that language. I don't know if I want to say softened, but make sure that we up the visibility of we will work with you. And it may, it may have changed and it may be fined that way, but, but I, what I tend to see in my inbox is, I can't believe they're suing me for, or finally, they're going to give me a ticket. It's like, no, you got a yellow violation. And yeah, I know it's upsetting that you've got picked on, or so you feel. But I've seen different ones where the language was softer. It didn't, wasn't just like in your face about get it done or we're going to hammer you. I think to at least just say, hey, if there's an extenuating circumstance and you can't get this done in seven days, call this number ASAP. I think that that would be something I'd like to see. So I need to break down this data here for just a second. I've got 24,00677 inspections. Are those cases? Or are those visits? Or what, what are they?
I'm going to have Jackie Davis come up and answer those questions.
Those are visits?
Come on up and get on the microphone, Jackie.
Those are, just working, there we go. Those are actually onsite inspections. Could be some complaints. And then we have to go out and verify them, those type of things.
So what, what I'm trying to get at Jackie, and I'm hoping you can help, help educate my ignorance here. Code, code officer either is notified or comes by and they see something that needs to be flagged.
Correct.
So they flag that. How many visits until that's resolved on average?
I'd say two.
Two. How long on average?
Seven to 10 days on average.
On average?
When you get into going towards the citation stage, it's a little longer.
Okay. Are you talking, what type of, are you talking about just for high grass and weeds?
Standard violations on slightly matter.
On slightly matter.
Yeah, health and safety code issues.
So what I'm, what I'm getting at here is, is your guys' time is valuable. Getting this resolved is valuable to the community. Can we use these metrics to see where the curve is and how much, how much are we spending? And is there, you know, as, as we go into more enforcement, you know, is it moving the needle on the amount of time it takes? I mean, if it takes, you know, if I've got a 40% group that's just three, four, 17, there's got to be a point where we go, you know, without just major extenuating circumstances, this is a one and done. This is a two and done. I love you guys and I don't want to put you in that position where you don't have carrots, but I think we do have enough carrots. I mean, we've worked really hard to give you guys carrots to move those ones that, that need it into a different process, I feel like. But that, that's what, that's what I hope that we get out of all of this is, okay, what, what is a softer approach to code enforcement versus a harder approach to code enforcement? We can, we can put a number to that as far as time, time it takes to resolution and number of visits.
Yeah, I think, and that's one of the things we've been asking and talking with code on is how many touches do you have on, on each, right? Because that, every time they have a touch, that's work, right? And
Right.
Are those touches actually paying off? Or are those touches just extra work for them and we're, now, I mean, I will say, when you say, when you see 96%, 97% compliance rate, that means the touches are working because we're not going to compliance.
Sure. But a 97% compliance rate, yes, but how long does it take to get that?
Right.
I can get a 97% compli, I could probably get 100% compliance, as long as my time horizon is long enough.
Right. The other interesting thing is that they always have the ability when they get to court to work it, as long as they've gotten compliance by the time they're, you know, when they have their pre-trial, we typically are still working with them.
Yeah.
Right? So now we're in court and now the, you know, as long as they've fixed the problem, they've gotten rid of the unsightly material or whatever it is, we're many times willing to just, you know, drop the charges or work a deal with them, right? Where they, so in those scenarios, if they're one offs, you know, first time situation, I think we're willing to continue to work with them on that. But if it's an ongoing problem, we just
Yeah, our frequent flyers, and I think we know what they are, where they are. Absolutely. Hopefully, they're, I'm not saying treated differently, but I think treated, understanding the history that has been there to, to put a little bit more, more pressure on that.
But I think you're hitting on it. I think in the next year, we're going to be trying to figure out what, using that data of how much, how, what is our return on investment on number of touches we have? And is there a way to streamline? I would love to have them have more capacity. And so is this really meaningful? Are we just extending it out too long? Should we just write a citation, get to court and then, you know, let, let the chips fall where they lay?
We also have abatement procedures that we are capable of using, where it's, we just go in and we clean it up.
Yeah, and then put a lien on it.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's your question?
Okay. That's sort of my question, but also my perception of how we can use the data that we get to, to make, make the department better.
Yes.
And I know some of this is probably, some of your tools have not been where they, where they needed to be. I mean, on the technology side of things.
No, I think they're, I've confirmed they're, they're good with what they're, what they've got right now. I thought I had a misunderstanding about what their, their solutions were.
Okay.
But I was schooled last week.
Good deal. Jackie, thank you.
And also, the other thing to note is beyond just code enforcement, I mean, if you look at construction sites, that's not code, that's building inspection. So, you know, every time they do an inspection, we're now telling people as of, I think, two weeks ago, if your site is dirty, you're not getting approval to move on to the next permit. So we're with, we're basically saying, this is part of your permitting process, you have to keep a clean site. So next is, this is more budgetary impacts. So this is maintenance. So we, a strike team is one of the things we're proposing. And so we can afford this if we are willing to do a additional fee on our trash collection bill of up to 68 cents per utility customer per month. And that would pay for a two to three person strike team. And what that strike team would do is that we already have contracts for maintenance of our, of our right of way. But it's when you have, like, let's say you have a homeless encampment that has moved on and there's just a bunch of trash sitting in one location. This team can be called out to deal with that. You could also have a situation where, let's say on Business 121, down close to Castle Hills, some of the, we maintain the medians over there. Well, we may have a street, a street sweeper that comes through. Well, all of the dirt still may be up on top of that median. This team can go out, blow off the medians into the street so that it's sucked up by the street cleaner. Same in Old Town. Like, if you have cleaning of streets, but you have, you may get dirt pushed into little corners and it doesn't really look clean, this team can be able to coordinate with those contractors to do so. This team would also be keeping track weight wise of all of the trash that they pick up in the community. And that can also be used towards KLBs, especially for continuing our partnership with KLB goals for trash pickups, which could enable us to get additional grant funding. I'll pause on that because that's a big, a big shift. Does anyone have any thoughts on that?
Council thoughts?
Love it.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
I like the idea. I think it may be also if we can make sure that we get as many pictures as we can so we can tell the story of what's going on. So when people ask, what are we spending this money on? We can give them something that they can see and understand this is what we're, this is what we're fixing.
I do, I support it. I do have, if I have any concern at all, it seems like we do hear from time to time, not infrequently, that it's just going to be another buck here and another buck there. So those do, do tend to add up. I like the concept a lot. I'm not overly concerned about, but just want to be cognizant of the, it's another dollar a month and how that adds up to the overall bill for the end of the year.
Yeah. And I think we're, there's, there is some more discussion about that recently, just be, especially I think from the Castle Hills standpoint, because, you know, you have your trash bills that are put onto your utility bill as well as part of that overall. And so I know we just recently increased that, that cost. So then pavement markings and crosswalks. So a budget expansion is going to be needed and we'll, we'll work that in to your upcoming budget to make sure we're doing more of those markings and refreshing them.
I have, yeah, refreshing. I have a question about that because it seems like, isn't there some sort of additional clear coating or something we can put over that? Because so many, like the peel out marks that are, so many of them are just, they don't look good now.
I think of the green paint for the bike lanes, that stuff seemed to just disappear overnight.
Yeah, I think there's different types of, there's, there are different types of treatments that we can use. It depends on the cost. So I know there's therm, you call it thermoplastics.
Thermoplastics is
That you can use. And there's additional costs associated with it. Really with a lot of the, the painting, if you're, with this heat and this, this weather, you have to be on it to keep it maintained, to have it be crisp. So, but thermoplastics also can be utilized.
I'd like to
Balance that.
Yeah. I would love to see more of this. This is, this actually came up just yesterday. Jim, I owe you an email about this, actually. It's a safety issue as well, right? These things should pop, they should, they give a, they give a finished look to an environment when they're going to look good. Then it can make it something run down as they start to a road. So I'm, I'm all for doing what we need to do to make sure these, it seems like a small thing, but whatever we need to do to keep these things crisp is, I support that.
And I will say, for expectations, it is something you'll always be chasing. But I think there's, we can do better than what we're doing right now. And also, just for the people who are listening, a lot of the roads that have complaints as well, I mean, we, we have growth opportunities, obviously, are text dot roads. And so for, there are times that I have made myself personally complaints about text dot striping over top of, I think it was 30, 40. And it took, you know, three months to get anyone to, to even respond to that. So, and we'll talk through what's going on with text dot in a little bit.
And I don't know if we can show that in the app. If we're, you know, if somebody puts a report out or any of our medias like that, maybe it's a form, a Google form or something on, on their website. Is the road you're complaining about a state road? If it's a state road, we will be happy to send that to If it's a state road, we will be happy to send that to Tech Dot. And people need to, you know, but is this a 121, Main 1171? I don't know if there's a way to do that, but like, I'd be okay with flagging Tech Dot on any of that stuff and say, reminding residents, that's a Tech Dot road, we're going to help you, but that's not the city, it's a Tech Dot road.
And that's also something we're dealing with, with lights as well, when people are complaining about lights. And some of them are ours, some of them are Coasters, some of them are TNMP, so it's, we're having, I think the public thinks it's all the cities. And so, we're just, we're largely, other than using our advocacy skills to get them to fix them faster, we're dependent on those other entities.
And the more data I have on that, the more, as the legislative session starts to kick up, I can go speak to our legislators and say, look, these are the unfunded mandates that we're having to deal with. These are the complaints, and this is the baggage that it's putting on my staff, because Tech Dot's not maintaining their facilities to a standard that really is required.
Okay, I'm jumping in here. In the app, or the call-in, or whatever, with all the code writing, and the AI, and all this other stuff, why isn't there some link, the minute you put in the address, that it can tell exactly where that needs to go?
I'll have to talk to Chris if there's, if there's, I think from what we've been doing, and I don't know, is Chris Lee in there, in the audience?
Yes.
Hey, come on up here, I'll ask you the question.
I was just going to say, that that seems like, like, the response on the app is pretty good. You get, it's been received. So, that may be something that we can collect the data, and AI can respond in a way saying, this is a state road, we'll report it for you, but you also, you know, and can send them the number here, here's how you would contact Tech Dot. The city will add this to the list and contact them as well.
Or the link that goes right to?
Well, yeah, I mean...
But we can't even get to it.
I think the response can be set up, but I'm all for the pavement marking, because I've been getting a lot of that. And I think the key is to control what we can control, but also informing the people what we can't control, and what the steps can be.
So, Chris, the question that was asked is, we have our app, and this is dealing with Tech Dot roads, or things that are not our property, like lights, et cetera. If someone is complaining about it, I think it just comes into us, and we act as the liaison to help. There's not a response that says, this is a Tech Dot road, right now, correct?
That is correct.
And so, Councilwoman Cade was just asking, is there a way to make that almost automated, to identify that, hey, because you can get your GPS, you get your GPS location right now, when you're making the complaint, that it says, this is a Tech Dot road, to at least let the person know? And then, her next question was, can you just have it automated sent to Tech Dot? I don't think you can, at this point, on that.
Yeah, and we're talking about through the current app, correct?
Yes.
Right. So, there is a map that you select, to your point, to where it will depict the location of whatever asset that you're wanting to report on. Currently, those assets are not depicted with respect to whose responsibility they are. So, that would hold true for roads, lights, anything of that nature. Could we, we could definitely change, or I would assume we could add some type of metafield to describe who the ownership is. Automating the request to the particular owner, that proves to be a lot more challenging. If we were to do something of that nature, I would assume we would actually do that development outside of the app altogether, meaning that there are certain constraints within the app itself, right? And so, one of the cool things about having in-house development is, we can do things that are outside of the box, right? But that does require us to truly own that, and it's additional, you know, technical debt on our side. I would not envision us being able to have that functionality within that current app, but if that's something that the council and city management desire, it is something that we could probably do in-house to provide that functionality.
I will say, though, that, thank you, Chris. So, the other thing to note is, I think that had been a philosophy previously, when I first became city manager, was people were complaining a lot about streetlights being out. And so, we were like, well, this is not City of Louisville, so just, if you have a problem, contact TNMP, which happened to be where a lot of them were having problems with. But in the end, we're still getting the complaints, and in the end, the public still thinks it's us. So, we're trying to advocate for these people, and also, there's, at some point, wanting to, and I think council, I would imagine y'all are going to agree, is that we, from a safety perspective, we've heard from our public, we feel like we don't have enough lights in our community. What we're finding, and you'll see this on another slide, is that we don't, we have a lot of lights that are out. There are a lot of lights that aren't our responsibility for maintaining, but we're paying a tariff on them anyway, so we might as well get them fixed, right? We might as well get them for our community. So, our staff has now decided, okay, we got to take ownership of that, but it does put more staff time, more staff energy is being spent on it, but we're trying to get the end result being beautification, right?
And safety.
And safety.
And so, to kind of piggyback on Ronnie's comment there, because I think where Ronnie's going, and if I'm misspaking, speaking, let me know, but I think where you're headed with that is, we want to dogpile these agencies until they're tired of us, and they just do the work they're supposed to be doing. For example, this tariff thing, right? They provide us lights. It's not my problem that they don't have somebody that does shift work at night. That's not my problem. You've got money that we pay you to maintain the lights. I shouldn't have to have somebody at night driving around. You know what you provided as a business service. So, you pay somebody to do shift work. That's really simple. And I have 1,000 complaints, so if we can document that. I have 1,000 complaints, it's costing me this, so I'm more than happy to continue to do this, but you're going to reduce my tariff because I'm doing your job.
Exactly.
So, that's where I'd like to be with lights, because, you know, this tariff nonsense, I've been looking at this for years now. You know, why are we paying, the tariffs we're paying for incandescent lights? You look around the city, we still have a ton of sulfur and incandescent, and that stuff's expensive compared to LED. And don't tell me that the LED and the replacement, it's not going to pay that back in spades. So, sorry. That's, for me, though, this is a business conversation with a TNMP.
Oh, absolutely.
With a Tech Dot, and with our legislators. But if I don't have the data, if I don't know what the burden has been on my staff, I can't have that argument. That's the hard part.
Yeah, so we are, we are actually meeting with TNMP, I think, in the next week or two, to talk about these very conversations, this week. So, we're on the same page with you. There's also lead time on ordering the replacements for a lot of the lights, TNMP's telling us, but the LED is not. So, we just need to understand that cost differential from that business standpoint, and that's what that meeting's about, is making sure we understand that cost differential.
They know what the life expectancy of these...
Exactly.
They know what the failure rate is. That's, don't tell me, oh, well, we got to wait and order all this stuff. You should have ordered all the light. I don't know why, but my button's coming on and off all day.
Okay.
So, but they know the life expectancy. This stuff is, this is not rocket science, this is light bulbs. This has been handled.
Yeah.
So, for them to give me that, well, we don't know, we don't inventory, we have to whatever, BS.
Yeah, I mean, I actually have some experience with Encore doing the same thing with the city of Dallas, and it's like 500 bucks a light to change it out to LED, if they really want to go to it. It's 500 bucks. And it's, so it's, why they can't, and just, why they just don't order the light, if they need to order light, just keep some light poles on staff, on hand. They know that they got to replace these light poles, just have them in your yard.
I do want to call out a little bit of, make sure we're on the same page. There's, the complaint that I hear, the concern that I hear is, not enough light on Street X or on Street Y. And that can be a couple of things, right? There can be two root causes. Root cause one is what we're talking about right now, the lights are just out, and they haven't been replaced. Root cause two is somebody just feels like there's not enough light, the distance between the posts are too far apart. And I've seen this movie, and I know how it ends, because we address this with the water districts quite a bit, it come up. And as soon as we go through and say, that's great, we'll go put more lights in, nobody wanted them in their front yards. So, I do want to make sure that we don't get aggressive about putting in more lights, and then get a backlash the other direction, so, well, I don't want them in my front yard, I don't want the light coming into my, coming into my front living room.
It's like you know our mind, staff's mind. That is absolutely a concern that comes up.
I want to make sure that all of Louisville is treated equally in this, and we have some sort of...
We have a standard on lighting.
Okay.
Spacing.
And...
Yeah. We have a standard on lighting spacing. We do have, in key corridors, you've seen council have made some changes to that, to increase lighting on those key corridors, but yes.
But we have some areas that do not have lighting at all, so we need to make sure that those are...
Yeah, so you guys had given us some additional funding related to just filling in where there's lights that are missing. One of the projects we're currently working on, but we still have to go through Tech Dot on that, is Business 121 corridor over close to the triangle area. So, that's one of our key focuses right now, is making sure there's more lights out, well, lights out there.
Yeah.
So, other than that, similar to the pavement markings and crosswalks, it's the refresh of painting of traffic signals, and then goats. So, we are going to be deploying, we are deploying goats, I think, this month. Stacy, do you have a date? Next week, we're deploying goats.
I am so excited about the goat project, yeah, I know we talked about that.
I don't know anybody that's not. I just like, opening a can of goats.
I can't even place why it's so exciting to me, but I think it's a couple of things. One, I think it's green, which is always good. But two, I love the out-of-the-box thinking, saying, hey, we got a problem, how can we solve this? I love it, but I'm very, very excited about this project.
I'm sure we're going to get a lot of pictures.
I need to know if they count the amount of goats when they release them. So, how do they know if they had the same amount coming back? Do they take inventory?
Yes, my understanding is that there's, yeah, there's a company that, it's like a, yeah, modern-day shepherd that stays with them.
So, they would miss one?
Yes. You can't...
No, I wouldn't.
For everyone who knows, Ronnie wants one.
Can you pet the goats when they're out there?
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that.
Can you play fetch, throw the ball?
I think it depends on how nice you are to the shepherd.
Patrick, they're employees, you shouldn't be doing that.
Oh, that's waiting to fire.
That's right, that's right. There are lines that we have to draw.
We've talked about this, Claire, I got it, thank you.
Yeah. And we'll do a social media post before they are deployed, so that you guys can share with constituents. And then also, budget expansion is needed for replacement of dead landscaping on medians. So, you have seen, especially with weather in key corridors. So, I think to be smart about where we're going to be spending this money, key corridors are probably going to be the place you're going to want to focus it on, but we do, right now, when things die, we're not actively replacing them. And that, a source for that might be our tree mitigation fund going forward. So, the next up is place-making. So, we have a lot of opportunities on the near future for large-scale projects, we're working on them, and this is where we can plan for that beautification. So, you've got your mall redevelopment, your Lake District, the Marina redevelopment, the Lake Park redevelopment, which is part, all of that's part of the Lake District, but I wanted to call them out separately, and then Old Town, specifically, where you guys gave us funding for a complete landscaping revamp in Old Town, and we're working on that. Also, it's funny, it's like council has read my mind yesterday, some of you had made this comment about facade and relocation grants in key areas. And so, these are basically the tools that we have been providing in Old Town, but finding other key areas for those. And I would say, key corridors, the Business 121 corridor would come to mind, which I think is what you guys were saying previously. Continuing to pursue public art, obviously, that is a, it's, council doubled down with approving that as being part of the budget, not budget, the bond election, so we will wait to see if we can get that funding through the bond election. And then tree planting grants. So, for this, we know that there are key areas with the healthy infrastructure plan, as well as with targeted corridors like Business 121, where trees would really change the sense, not only air quality and having cooling effects, but also change just the look of it. And so, this is not to replace by minimum code, this is, you know, this is not to have businesses meet minimum code requirements, this is to go above and beyond. And then, Mayor, you talked on some of this already, and some of the other council members did too, but this is advocacy and partnership. So, with Tech Dot, it is not that our Tech Dot local offices don't want to help. The state is not funding, fully funding Tech Dot maintenance of roads. So, we recently took over, well, recently, I don't know, four, five years ago, we took over I-35 maintenance on the feeder roads. And what happens is Tech Dot gives us, whatever they were paying earlier, they give us that dollar amount, and then we have to supplement. And I can tell you, what they give us is not nearly enough to keep it clean. And we're supplementing, and it's still not keeping it clean pristine, right? So, this is an ongoing, it's just, it's just bad. And every city up and down Tech Dot roads are experiencing the same thing. Right now, we're also looking at taking over Business 121. Now, that's a lift, and I hate, I hate to say that we're going to have to take over responsibility of a Tech Dot road, but at the end of the day, it's not going to get done with the current funding. So, from Tech Dot. But talking about with Tech Dot, it's really seeking additional responsiveness. I will say, the strike team would be able to also be someone who's engaging. We would have a crew leader that could be more engaged with Tech Dot, but then we really do need to advocate through the legislative process with our state legislatures to get Tech Dot more dollars for maintenance of local roads. And I'm, you know, totally fine maintaining it, as long as they're giving us the appropriate amount of dollars for that. And so, then, we already talked about the electric providers. So, we started taking over about a year ago, we decided, okay, we're seeing that there's some problems with lights, and we see that our electric providers are not going out and identifying when lights are out, so let's put our manpower, pay people overtime, to go out at night and just identify those lights that are out. And right now, we have currently 700 lights in our community. I mean, this is just total transparency that are out. Now, some of them are Louisville Lights, some of them are CoServe, some of them are Tech Dot, Tech Dot, TNMP, the majority are TNMP. And then, we're going to be working with all of those to get these fixed. But the difficulty is not that, to get them, I mean, to get them fixed is a problem, but they will get fixed. The problem is the ongoing checking, it's a very manual process, there's not a lot of data, other than going manual. And I say manually, we've created an app, but it requires a person to drive around town to identify, and it's falling on staff to get it done. And that's where we're concerned, and we want to advocate more with those providers to help us.
So, I have no idea if anybody's on this, but when I hear something like that, it seems like a drone, might be something to explore, putting a drone out there that follows the same pattern, looking for lights that are out. And I think for the cost of an employee, you might be able to do a program like that. I have no idea if that's being done right now, but it's something that might be worth looking at. They can't fly at night? Well, there you go, that's why, that's why nobody's doing it, I guess.
I was like, that's a great idea, but I didn't know that.
Yeah, that's why one more question.
Hey, Claire, one thing, when you're talking about Tech Dot, and you're talking about us taking over the roads and funding, I'm sure there, like, TJ brought up dogpiling, I would just say accumulation of information may be a better way to put it. Maybe we can talk with other cities that are around us, so that we can get, gather that information, what we're spending, what we're getting, and in collaboration, get that up to our state officials, because it's going to be a legislative issue, so they can see the gap, and push the issue for, not just us, but all the cities.
I agree with that. I know that Judge Eads has at least expressed in the past some interest in trying to get a collaborative of other cities in Denton County to work together to get that data. So, I think you're definitely aligned with some of the discussions that have been had.
I can bring that up at the next mayor's lunch.
Okay. And then, last but not least, is Keep Louisville Beautiful. So, I think Keep Louisville Beautiful does an amazing job with their event. It's one of the largest volunteer events of the year, every year. And we do have city involvement in this, but this is really making sure that we're, how can we put that on steroids from a communication standpoint? Because it's already a great event, and how can we wrap ourselves around that to help them more? Can we do promotional videos leading up to it to get more people interested in it? And then, making sure all employees are involved as well, not just, not just some of the key departments. And then also, making sure that council understands where we are aligned with KLBs, so wanting to see if they will come to us and do just presentations with our Parks Board, as well as with council, so that we understand kind of where their litter abatement efforts have been, they can report back on their gardening classes and beautification efforts and litter metrics, and let's set goals together. I think that is being done on a, on a department level, Parks is usually the liaison with them, but I would love to see it on a board to council level as well. So, with that, anything else for discussion?
I'm hearing consensus that we wanna move forward on several of those pieces, so looking forward to seeing some, some more focused direction and next steps.
Okay, wonderful.
All right. With that, we're about, about time to take, I think, about a 10 minute bio break.
Okay.
So we will come back here at about 15 after. Oh, wow, Harry, I'm live. We're gonna go ahead and get started again, I think we're moving into the public engagement piece, is that right, Claire? So we have Mr. Conkey, Mr. Lukey, and Claire, all, Ms. Powell, all putting us some information on public engagement.
We can't compete with goats, but we'll do the best we can. So as we get into the area of public engagement, I briefly want to just point out, we did a, some work with the departments to put together a list of the various engagement tools and tactics that we use, and we stopped counting when we crossed 150, decided, okay, we got a pretty good sample here. But as you're looking at engagement, there's really three major types of engagement that we use. When we are giving information to the public, but there is not an immediate chance to respond to it by the public, that's outbound engagement. And when there's a, when we are gathering input from the public, but we don't have a way to directly respond to their input, that's inbound. And then the ideal is when we're providing information, they're responding, and we can react to them, and that is two-way engagement. And we do all three of those. These are just some examples, major categories of our outbound engagement tools, you've seen these things. Printed materials are still very important for us. The Horizon Newsletter, for example, is the only tool we have on a regular basis that reaches every single household in the city of Louisville. We put it in their hands, whether they read it or not is up to them. Surveys indicate that readership is very high for that publication. The annual report, posters, flyers, brochures, printed materials still have a place. Digital materials have grown, obviously, haven't replaced it. That includes our six different email newsletters, that includes the digital screens you see here in the building, there's one down the hall by the kitchen. And then online materials, which obviously are digital, but we, we think of these as ones you can only access through a computer or a similar device. We have 10 websites now, nine of those 10 are all on the same maintenance backboard, one is an outside one that we now control, but is separate in terms of the control, in terms of the management. And then the mobile apps, we have a couple of different mobile apps out there. We've moved away from mobile apps in some ways, because these days, if the website is mobile responsive, it kinda serves as a mobile app if you design the webpage correctly, and we transitioned to that in some areas, we're about to transition to that with the Visit Louisville. But there are still some mobile apps out there, and I doubt we'll ever get away from, completely, from specialized mobile apps. The Metrics Dashboard, which is where we're putting a lot of great information, information that a lot of people aren't finding in other cities. Video, signs, billboards, water bill inserts, and notices. So all of these are ways that we are putting information out there, but the public does not have a chance to directly respond. They can send an email or a call, but there's not a quick, easy click button. Inbound, we just have these four lists, it's surveys, we're gathering information, but we don't know who gave us that information, so we can't respond to someone directly. The online polls and surveys, the RockSoler Reporting Platform, and the Zen City Sentiment Tracking. Now, this is a short list, not because we only have these four ways of gathering input, but because one of our objectives is always to take these tools and find a way to make them two-way, so that we can acknowledge and act on the input we've received. And here's our two-way list, notice the font gets smaller here, because this list continues to grow. Public meetings, special events, our various academies, public engagement meetings, which, for example, SH 121 Business, all of the work there on that corridor, there's been a lot of public engagement, PARD had a lot of public engagement, and I'll point out, by the way, this is not what your community relations team is doing by ourselves. Every department in the city is involved. Just in the past six months, Finance, PARD, and Court have all received awards for public engagement efforts. So this is a citywide program. Our ambassadors group, that has met twice and is continuing on, the NROs and SROs, they are face to face. We see from survey data that the more, I mentioned this when I presented survey results most recently, the more people engage with us on a personal basis, with human beings, the happier they are with their city. So this is, NROs and SROs are great, and we're trying to find more ways to do it. Plows Away, that is, Coffee with Cops, and then our partnership with the Chamber. We got some new things that are rolling out, and, did I turn something off? I don't know, it'll go back on. These are three, one is the Multifamily Outreach Plan. When half your population lives in apartments, you have to find a way to reach them, and that is often an under, under-engaged population. Sometimes it's because they expect to be here for six months, and they don't wanna get terribly involved, and sometimes it's just because they maybe don't feel like they're a part, that belonging we talked about. So we have a plan to actively reach out, we rolled it out middle of 2023, we've seen some good early results, and we're continuing to find ways to expand on that and use that to reach that half of our population. You heard yesterday, mention about the City Bot, which is a 24-hour AI chat bot that will be attached to all of the websites on our core control system, so nine of our 10 websites will have access to it. That contract, I believe the purchase order now has been processed, so we are, hopefully, three or four months away from starting to test that. One thing you'll see is this system gets smarter the more it is used. Right now, we're working on the FAQs, that'll be kind of the, the base information for this system, but when we're ready to launch it, we're gonna really encourage the public to test it hard, and we'll warn them, you might get a whole lot of, I don't know, call so-and-so the first month or so, but the more people use it and test it, the more robust that system will become. And our video production truck, now, we've been talking to you about this for three and a half years, we ordered it in late 2020, early 21. Ford ran out of motors multiple times, I'm not sure how that worked, but finally, we got the truck delivered to us about six weeks ago, it's now been delivered to Massachusetts for upfitting, we hope to have that back in place by the end of the summer, so we can start training and using it. And ways that that'll help us in engagement, one is we're, we're working with the instructor over at Tech West on using some of their video students to work with us when we use the truck, to be camera operators, maybe even work on the switching board, especially if we're doing school events. School events on our cable channel would draw a lot of people to it. We can't broadcast sporting events live, that's against UIL rules, but we can broadcast them the next day, and I think a lot of people would be watching that. Same with fine arts presentations and so forth. So quickly touch on the Centennial Celebration Committee. We heard from our, from our moderator at the start of the retreat, that the 100th birthday is a big deal, you get one, and you don't wanna miss it, you wanna make a big deal of it, have fun. So we have formed a centennial committee, we actually have 40 members now, one person unfortunately had to drop off for, for health reasons. But we do anticipate adding people throughout the year, moving people around. This includes some residents who've been around for, well, 50, 60 years, includes some that have been here for less than two years. So we have a really great variety of ideas and viewpoints, we have teachers, businessmen, businesswomen, just all kinds of different people in that. We've met once, we're forming these nine subcommittees. Oscar Carlisle is not on the committee, but his picture's a great one. And we're working with, trying to get the plan together of what they wanna do to celebrate. They want it to be a year-long celebration with certain highlights during the year, and we started with a list of more than 40 opportunities, really it was, it was more than 50, but some of them kind of were duplicates. And they've trimmed that down considerably, in fact, in your packet, we'll talk on the next slide about some of the specific items, and in your packet, there's a list of the, the activities that are currently being researched based on committee input, so we can submit a budget request as part of next year's budget submittal. You see the six major categories there, branding, events, arts and culture, history, community involvement, and permanent markers. This gets a little bit more in detail, these five items we know are going to happen, because of the tremendous response we already got, a dedicated centennial website that we will hire someone outside to develop for us, a centennial logo, recreations of historical photos, I'm sure it'll shock you to know that Kelly Blackall has said she wants to do that, and we welcome that. Artifacts, artifact displays at various city facilities, and then the library, and talking with Carolyn Booker and her team, they have some ideas of ways to highlight literature, not just from the 20s, but a century's worth of literature, but tying back to the 20s. So those five are going to happen. And then the list in your packet shows about 15 to 18 items that we are researching for the committee right now. And as I've told the committee, we won't be able to do all of them, probably, some of them might not be feasible, some of them are gonna really require the committee to do the heavy lifting, because staff won't be able to, and then part of it is gonna be budget. But we'll do as many as we can. That list is subject to change. We have some ideas that the committee kinda like, but not as much, but if someone comes along and does them for free. For example, we have, there was an idea that's talked about, about having a series of articles about Louisville history that could be published on the webpage, we could submit to various newspapers and so forth, and people liked it, but not as much as some other items. But one of the committee members is a history teacher who has written history articles for history publications and said, I want to do this. So that, that gave that a little bit more emphasis. So the list will change off and on as we go through, once we've got that finalized. My, my approach has been, if it benefits the city and is free, there's a good chance you'll get a yes out of us. So, just some old photos from the 20s. Louisville 2025 Vision Plan, so this was developed back in 2014, we did an update process, the TouchPoint that started in 19 and was adopted in 20, well, 2025 is next year, and so it's time for that plan to again be revised and to evolve into whatever the next iteration of our vision plan and our vision is. So you see there the list of some of the things we did with the TouchPoint process, and that plan was, received some recognition for being a very effective engagement plan. So as we go into next, the next update, which will start late this year, we'll adopt a whole lot of those same tools, and then find ways to improve them. There's technology now that four and a half years ago either didn't exist or was just starting to exist. So we feel like we can, we can do a lot more than we did before. In particular, our Multifamily Outreach Plan and our outreach to local churches, we think is an opportunity to get more people involved in this planning process. So we're in the early stages of developing that plan and a timeline, which we will be submitting a, a proposal for budget submission. The idea would be that late this year, you start the process, and then at some point, probably in mid-2025, we, we are finished with that. You see down the bottom left, that's the 2035 logo, that actually was developed during the TouchPoint process, and council liked it, but said, that's great, let's wait till 2025, then we can use it. So we haven't lost it, we still have it, even have a really cool video we made at the time of it transitioning. So we're, we're ahead of the game, and I think Claire wanted to touch on that last point.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I just wanted to talk to you just briefly and make sure that we're all kind of aligned on this is, so, at the same time that we adopted our last update on 2025, we also adopted our Sustainability Plan. And actually, there was a lot of discussion at that time about whether or not we wanted to keep that plan as a separate plan from your overall long-range plan, which is your, which is your 2025 plan. Ultimately, we had decided we were going to keep it separate, and the reason why was because we wanted to make sure that it was, we were clearly setting out the sustainability with something separate and apart, and that we put a lot of importance on it. But if you saw from the 2025 plan, there was a lot of overlap, I mean, a lot of the goals are very similar. And so this year, with 2035, we are proposing to incorporate those Sustainability Action Plan into the Long Range Plan. I think that's a benefit, primarily because we don't, we never wanna keep a, a plan on a shelf, and I think that the majority of the tasks that have been, we've succeeded in the Sustainability Action Plan have been the ones that have been also reflected in 2025. So I just wanted, Council, to understand that going forward, our plan is to merge those two, so it would be a Vision and Sustainability Plan. But wanted to make sure that, you know, from an engagement standpoint, you guys were comfortable with that. And if you guys, and also, we'll pause here, James, did you have anything else on this?
On this slide, no.
You can go to the next one, I think.
The next one, I think, is the input slide.
Okay, yeah, that's exactly what we were, I was looking for, was input.
So we have some discussion points for you, would like to hear your input, since it is two-way engagement, right here in this room, in this moment. Like to hear where you think our engagement is working, and also where there's gaps that we can fill, and finally, over the next two to three years, how would you like to see us grow and expand our engagement efforts?
I would like to go back to what we were just talking about regarding this sustainability. I am perfectly fine with incorporating the Sustainability Action Plan into our Louisville, I guess, 2035 plan. I was supportive of doing that. I, I don't like having it separate, I understand when we kinda separate it out, it, yes, it can show the importance, but it also creates a, well, this is something that we're not incorporating into everything we do. So I, I feel like if we want to set a, a mindset and a culture that we're gonna, sustainability is really more of a strategic move, and we're gonna incorporate it into everything we do, not as something separate if we can, I think it just makes sense to combine it.
Do you have anything else on any of these?
On any of these? I guess I, I mean, I see, I am not on all social media platforms, and we are getting into election season, so it seems like there's a lot more engagement, at least on the, the social media platforms, that at least I see. One concern I have is that there's an incredible amount of misinformation that's put out there that is stated as fact, and that's, not only is that not helping us inform the public, it's actually setting us backward. So I, I do see, I mean, it's, it's just all the time, and so I will see responses from Louisville City Hall as much as possible to help when they see something that's just not right, to try to correct that, but there has to be more, because there's, there's so much misinformation that's put out there. And for me personally, I think part of that is what we as a council do. My concern is, you know, because we, we don't, definitely don't want to get into walk-in quorum issues, maybe if we could have a little, just like little workshop session or something that gives us a refresh of what can you do, what can't you do, just so we're all, all of us are on the same page on what we can do, so that we can help what the, you know, Louisville City Hall admin is doing to respond to, to some of the misinformation that's out there.
Yeah, just adding to that, one, one challenge that we face during election seasons is we traditionally have not engaged in conversations once there's an elected official or a candidate for office involved, partly because we don't wanna be seen contradicting one of you, or someone who could be one of you, but also because once a campaign starts, we're really leery about anything that could be perceived as electioneering. If we see a council member or a candidate that posts something that is factually incorrect, we will tell them privately, hey, this that you posted is incorrect, and it's up to them to fix it or not. The ambassadors group, we've seen several of the members of the ambassadors group starting to become much more vocal recently, which was one of the hopes of the ambassadors groups that they would. But yeah, if a council member or a candidate posts something that is factually incorrect, we'll tell them about it, we just won't necessarily engage them directly because of the campaign season.
I do appreciate the, the efforts around social media, I'm probably, I'm very active on social media. I do, to your point, if I see something and I see that Louisville City Hall or somebody's already addressed it, I try to get back out of it, for all, very similar reasons, right? It is difficult, and you know, we're in the, and we have the issues with walking quorons, but some of these things get to be three, four hundred comments long, you go through and read every single comment, say, well, did TJ weigh in? And, you know, so there's clarity around that, help would be, some help around that would be really appreciated. I, I'm gonna go back a step, though, in that, one of the things I'd like to see is, I think we've, is gonna come off wrong, and I'm gonna correct it. So I think we've over-efforted our, our, our direction in, in communication, when we have 150 ways that we communicate, I'd like to see that actually come down to be more concentrated, because it's overwhelming. I just posted something about this oddly on social media, about this very same thing. It's like, I get up and I go, there's nowhere to eat, and the reality is, there's 20 restaurants by me, and I get overwhelmed by the decision. So it's not that there's nowhere to eat, I just can't make the decision, because there's too much input. And I feel like we might, we may have over-corrected to that, that level, so it'd be interesting to see if we can consolidate and distill some of that down to a more concentrated effort. The other thing I wanna, I wanna put out, and I would love to see if there's a way to take government out to the neighborhoods, can we have a council, can we have council meetings once a quarter outside of chambers? And I put that out there for a couple of reasons. One, I know it's probably difficult, two, I don't even know the legal ramifications of doing that, but I like it because we talked about difficulty of engaging in certain communities, we talked about apartments, we talked about maybe some of our, maybe Chin community getting out there and taking the government out to the people. We may get no engagement, but that's okay, we made the effort, and, and I like the fact that we made the effort. I will tell you, and we've all probably been on the other side, and speaking at that podium, it's an intimidating room. You go in there, it's all wood, and then people elevated, it can be intimidating to go up to that podium and It can be intimidating to go up to that podium and speak. And then taking this out to a, to a community center, to a park, to an HOA area or something like that, it's a little less intimidating maybe for people to get up and speak. But I'd love to consider that in the coming year. Is there a way we can take council meetings out to the public?
And we, we had a discussion, I think, last week or the week before. I'm a little leery about taking our council meetings out of, for, for a myriad of reasons. And I think that would, we can have that discussion later. However, I think that when you go back to give a man a fish, he'll eat for a day. Teach him to fish, he'll eat for a lifetime. We have a lot of citizens that I call spoon-fed citizens. And they, even though it's right there, they want you to feed it to them. We can't always do that. There's a certain amount when you become an adult and taxpaying citizen, that there's a certain amount of responsibility on you. You're no longer in diapers, on a bottle and everything. We have constraints in certain demographics, like our citizens and stuff like our senior citizens, that there's a lot of technology issues, that are lack of knowledge thereof that, but we have so many avenues of information and communication out there that it's time for some people to step up instead of using social media that not everyone uses as the know-all, be-all of everything that's going on in the city of Louisville. She's, she was very nice in saying misinformation, I'm gonna say outright lies and venom for their own personal recognition and gain. And I'm no longer want to feed into it by spoon-feeding them.
I got several things I just brought down after everybody was talking, which, well, one thing I, I don't know if we can do is more Louisville Grand Theater events like we used to do. I don't know how much engagement we got out of that, but I know I used to go to those a lot on the topics that we, what we had. I know we're doing a few of those, but I think if we got more of those possibly going. I know, I know that it's kind of old school, but I think the water bill thing with the, with the pamphlets, I think that you reach everybody, maybe you can do like a topic of the month or something on these topics that people that are complaining about. I'm excited about the video truck. I think there's some things that could be done. I, I think with nowadays, I don't know if we can do a podcast and just talk about these, you know, events. I don't know how, how that would work or who would, who you'd have on there, the mayor, maybe different people. People are just responding to, to different, you know, these, these newer technologies. I do think that the, if we could do something, I know every time we go to the Chin event every February, it seems like that's the only time I engage with, with, with that group. Seems like if we could go out to their place, maybe, or like even the Latino community, you know, find a place that we could engage with them out there. I think, I would love to, you know, engage with the Chin community more than once a year, although I see, see Young because he's on the Cert Louisville Board, I would love to, love to have that. And I think this is kind of outside the box, but I look forward to the NFL Draft thing every year. If we, if we can get somebody excited about an event like that where, hey, we, we've got to go, you know, that's something to me, like we can maybe, I don't know how you do that, but you know, that's one thing, I love the NFL Draft. I don't know what it is about it, but if we can capture that, I think that's something would be great.
I, I just want to touch on one thing that James said, like, I think, you know, people are more happy when they have a human connection. So we have to find a way that we can do that. I don't think a council meeting in public may work, but maybe council members engaging in certain events to talk about certain city issues may be helpful where we won't necessarily have a quorum, or maybe we can. I mean, that, that, you know, whoever wants to attend an event, but we, we might need to plug into community events that are happening, particularly in Castle Hills, you know, in, in south of 30, 40, where I, I've noticed like the, the voting down there is very low and the engagement is low. And we like, and the reason I noticed that is because we had no voting location down there. So I mean, we need to try to tap into certain things, like when we're talking about the mall redevelopment, maybe we can have some kind of event there. But, but it'd be easier to tap into the events that we have. And regarding to the communications that we have, unfortunately, I think we have to continue around what we're doing, trying to consolidate it, may not be as effective, but maybe what we can do is find out through our residents who, who come to different events, which one do they get their information from? And then, then we can target and focus on the, on those most effective means of communication. I want to say that the staff, I know that the staff for every year I've been on council, even when I was on P and Z, is trying to find new ways to engage residents. It's not a matter of us not trying. The big, the biggest thing is the residents have to tell us, and to your point there, they have to tell us what works best for them. And, and we have to consolidate that into an effective manner. We can't, we can't do everything. But it is incumbent, like when there's an issue, I see, and I watch the city of Louisville, I don't comment on it because I'm worried about the walk-in quorum issue.
The unofficial.
Well, I, I don't want to break state law. So, but when people ask me something, I answer the question as quickly as possible. So I, I always encourage folks, just ask me. We're all your council members. The residential district thing, yes, that's changed a bit, but we're all your council members, you vote for us all, and he's all your mayor. So you, and it's his fault usually. But we, I, I think we're, we're making efforts, we just need to try to find a way after post-COVID to make a personal contact with as many people who want to have made contact. And we find that they're more engaged in the ambassadors program is awesome because I watched them get into people who are, who are telling mistruths or trying to point people in the wrong direction. But more importantly, some people just innocently don't know. And, you know, I would direct them to the, if you're on Facebook, go to Louisville City Staff, you know, go to the website or reach out to one of us. So I think we're doing the right things. I just think we, we can try to find more, the most effective way that's reaching people. And as far as the water utility, I don't even open mine, I just pay it on text. So, you know, there are different modes for everybody.
So few things. First of all, I think our engagement efforts are outstanding. I think the written material we put out there is outstanding. The social media that I see is outstanding. We, we do a really good job of communicating clearly, concisely and to the point and getting the, getting the information out there. Where I think, and I'm dovetail, I think we know the events that we have, and I think absolutely, can we dovetail onto that? I mean, meet them where they are, might as well take advantage of that. I don't know what that looks like, but there, there's something there, I think, that we can create. Couple of things that I would love to see continue and, and get more of. We had the, and I, my apologies, wasn't able to make it, don't have the name, but it was the Meet the City event two weeks ago, a week ago.
Yes, Learn Louisville.
Learn Louisville. Love that. Carrollton does something similar where they have all their, all their groups like come out and their council's there and then it's, and it's an evening event that they do. And there's tables and poster boards and people can get plugged in. Here's how you get plugged into these departments and whatnot.
We just discussed.
Yeah, I love that one. So.
We're, just to let you know, we actually have one we're planning, another one, it's gonna be a slightly smaller version, but it's gonna be at Creekside Mobile Home Park. So we'll have a pop-up City Hall event there.
Yeah, so some, somewhere we can get that pop-up City Hall kind of concept. I love, I love it, let's do more of it, figure that out. Video, I think, is also, with the truck coming, I think that's gonna help. I, I will tell you, my, my social media contacts have exploded on video. I'm seeing so much more traction as far as just, just people seeing stuff than the text stuff, the traditional text. So that's, that's an interesting angle. I, I love our Fall Community Service Day that we're slowly ramping up. I think we're done slowly. I think it's time. We've had two years of it. I know COVID kind of put a little hiccup in there, but I'm not sure about the branding. I mean, it, there was a, one of the universities, it was their day of service that we kind of piggybacked on and then.
Are you talking about For the Love of Louisville?
Yeah, yeah, there was the, there was, but it was originally when we did it, it piggybacked to one of the university days of services.
It was, well, Make a Difference.
Make a Difference.
Make a Difference Day.
Yeah. So I think branding around that one's been a little confusing maybe, or we've had multiple events where they've just, they haven't kind of congealed into one Community Service Day. But I, I think, yeah, Love of Louisville Day, that one, I think we absolutely need to tout as like a new big event. Call it an event like Western Days, except it's service-oriented. And then I've told this to Claire, but I, I love the CERT program. Many communities have tried like the, the, what is it, the Eyes in the, the Eyes in the Neighborhood, the community, Neighborhood Watch. And Neighborhood Watch works extremely well. Something happens, everybody gets involved, one person gets burned out, it goes away in six months. I mean, it, you, you see it all the time, those community neighborhood watches just don't stick. But CERT, I think, sticks and because it's about how do I help my neighbor? How do I help my neighborhood? It's not about how I defend against crime, it's about how do I help my neighborhood? And I think people want to help, they want to feel connected. So maybe we don't call it CERT, but it's, it's, you know, what is that neighborhood set of resources that I have? And then how do I tap into the, the, the city programs to make it even bigger? That's for public engagement, those are the things that I think will really get us traction over the next two to three years, if we, if we just kind of put a focus on it.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up, so who, you have it? Yeah, you can go to the next slide. Economic Trends and Budget Calendar.
I don't know about you, but we've been waiting a day and a half to get up here.
Are you gonna take, are you gonna take out the AI presentation? Are you ready?
If you're asking me, yes. Now, we don't have anything that flows downhill and we don't have any cool graphics, but I think what we have is going to kind of help set the tone for the preparation of the budget. This will probably carry us through to lunch, just kidding. We have a group effort here. We've got Mirichelle Samples, that's gonna provide some demographic information. We've got Ashley Carlyle, who's gonna handle the, some budget and finance, and I'm gonna kind of cover some economic indicators and some other stuff about sales tax and some other topics. But anyway, we're happy to be bringing this staff presentations home, so then council can then start having some of that strategic discussion that's to follow. I guess I gotta work on that. So what are the areas that we're gonna cover today? Again, I mentioned them earlier, economic indicators, demographics and budget and finance. And I think this information is intended to set the tone for the fiscal year 2025 budget process. Lot of good information. Keep in mind the environment that you're creating next year's budget in, so it'll help with some of that decision-making. As we've done in, in the last couple of years of the retreat, we've provided economic conditions, what's going on in the economy and how we think they're gonna impact the preparation of the budget for the coming year. This is a consistent theme from last year. Areas of inflation, employment and what's the Federal Reserve doing with the tax rates? They were key last year and they're key again this year. Some of the items that I want to point out on this slide, and again, there's a lot of information throughout the whole presentation, and we're just gonna touch on some of the highlights. But if you want to dig deeper into some of the questions, we'd be happy to go over them. But some of the key points from this slide is the low employment environment that, unemployment that we are currently in. Both, and the most recent month's statistics show that both Texas and the national unemployment rates are at 3.9%. Inflation is falling, but it's not, not where it needs to be. The Federal Reserve keeps calling it stubbornly high. They want to get their target rate to 2% and it hasn't been coming down as quickly as, as they had hoped. Hence, with the most recent meetings that the Federal Reserve has held, they held their rates at the five and a quarter to five and a half. Now, there are still plans to have three reductions by the end of the year in the rate cuts, probably not starting until the third quarter of this year. This information comes from a presentation from the Dallas Fed. I was attended by Claire earlier this month. This is information actually that was shared leading up to their March meeting, so it kind of gave us some insight into their decision to hold the rates where they were. Some of the key points that came out of this presentation speak to the fact that Texas continues to outperform the nation in a number of different areas, including growth, specifically in the Dallas-Fort Worth region. While it's slowing, it remains healthy. The outlook for the future, some of the positives, economic growth continues strong in Texas and jobs growth continues as well. Some of the negatives that are out there, inflation, stubbornly high, while it's considerably lower than what it had been in the past, they're still having to do some fiscal policy to keep that, to bring that down. And then the upcoming presidential election, there's a lot surrounding that. We've got two candidates that are very different positions in a number of different areas and depending what happens could dictate how the economy moves forward from that. Outlook on construction, we've reached out to Chris Squadron on this information just to get a sense of where we're at with that. As you've heard throughout all these presentations, we've had a number of projects that are in the queue, some even greater number that are coming down the road with the Blue Ribbon projects. And the impacts to the construction and the pricing is a big concern of ours. So not as, not much has changed from last year. The labor shortage in the trade still exists. There's a rising demand for materials and supplies, which are increasing labor costs and increasing materials costs. And we are seeing this impact on the city projects. And as you are well aware, when we developed the plan for the Blue Ribbon projects, we had a 9% inflation rate added to the project cost, which is quite considerable. So any, any relief in this area would allow us then to extend that bond capacity further and accomplish more projects with that. Regarding the inflation abatement and risk of recession, a lot of that is still mixed. The slowdown hasn't occurred as anticipated, keeping the demand high. So again, it's keeping pressure, upward pressure on the costs of construction. The soft landing appears to be taking place. So we're not gonna see a recession, which would then provide some relief to that demand, but that's still mixed as far as the economists are concerned. Just please note that, you know, even with all this pressure that we have on construction and construction pricing, we're using all the tools that are available in our purchasing toolbox to minimize those impacts. And one of the examples is that construction managers are at risk. So we're gonna use every tool that we can to manage those costs the best that we can. Okay, so that's just some points on the economy. I'll turn it over to Mirichelle with some demographic information.
All right, good morning. So we'll start off by talking about multifamily rental rates. So just as a recap, of course, there was a huge increase by rents by 20% back in 21, 22. That has slowed since and we're expecting that rent growth is going to just increase slightly by approximately 2% in the next year or so. So as for office space, Louisville has about 5.3 million square feet. In 2023, there was 184,000 square feet under construction, which is definitely an increase from what we saw in 2022, because in 2022, only 21,500 was under construction. The occupancy rate kind of was approximately 80% and over the coming years, a trend shows that it kind of stays there. It still hasn't recovered from post, pre-COVID days. So hot topic, industrial space. So Louisville has about 19.2%, I'm sorry, 90.2 square, million square feet of inventory. And according to CoStar, Louisville is well-balanced and fundamentals, fundamentals are strong because we also have a low vacancy rate, lower than the market average. And what we saw last year was an occupancy rate of about 92%. And at the time, the trend showed that it was gonna stay about. And at the time, the trend showed that it was going to stay about there. But now what we see Q1 of this year is that we're up to 97% occupied. And the trend stays between 95% to 97%. And so we looked at this chart to kind of compare our, do a comparison of some of our surrounding cities. And regardless of if it's, if we, if you look at it, total square feet of industrial versus the percentage of total land area used for industrial, Louisville is well-balanced and falls pretty much right in the middle.
Okay. This is the chart I've been looking for. This is a great chart. I really appreciate that. Thank you so much for that chart. You framed it up very, very nicely for me. Thank you.
We had to find where we were going to pull that information, but it took us a little bit of time, and we got it. I also wanted to just point out that some of these cities, like for example Flower Mountain, the .08%, I mean, these are cities that are still being built out. So they have a lot of green space that's still to be yet developed. I just wanted to point that out.
So retail trends in 2023, we remain about 92% to 94% occupied. And then the last year, about 82,000 square feet were delivered. So Louisville is the largest retail submarket in the metroplex, and it captures about 4% of the total retail inventory in DFW. And within the submarket, Louisville captures 40% of the total retail space and has more shopping and dining space than any other city its size or larger in the DFW region. So income levels, so that has slightly increased. So we buy about 1,709. So we were at 78,175, and now we're up to 79,84. The per capita income slightly increased by about 126, as well as the median income slight increase as well by 114. What we're seeing on the spending is it, the top two have remained the same, healthcare and entertainment. Healthcare did increase from about 6,000 to about 7,000, and entertainment increased by approximately 1,000 as well. And the top two areas of income, I'm sorry, the top three income range is between 50 So the daytime population on here, no, excuse me, the population. James's slide earlier yesterday had a little bit more updated information from the COGS, so the population is a 134,241. So there was an increase of 937 new residents in the last year. The different modes of transportation, there wasn't really much of a change there, nor the commute times were relatively close to where we were within the last year. So the jobs, though, the white collar, blue collar, and services pretty much stayed the same. There was a slight, just a very slight increase in white collar and services by about .4%. So very minimal. And the top three remain the same, management, office, admin, and sales. And I'm going to turn it back over.
So the next several slides, we're just going to cover property tax and how it's changed over the years. And I see Ronnie shaking her head, and she's looking at those values. And it's pretty amazing. If you go back probably 10 years, we've over-doubled our value. Now, some of that has to do with annexation, some of that has to do with the way the market has increased those property values. So this five-year period is not your typical five-year period. There's a lot of variability there because of the circumstances like the pandemic and the slowdown, and then the annexation and the high growth over the last couple of years. Now, this is through tax year 2023. We're heading up on tax year 2024. And I think there's an expectation for, and I'll show you a little bit later in the presentation, that we're probably expecting some double-digit growth again for the 2024 tax year. Part of that is we've got the home set exemption that only allows that tax bill to go up 10%. Well, when your properties are up 30%, you're playing catch-up with that. So I still think that there's going to be some significant growth in our taxable assessed value for the upcoming year. And just for context here, the average annual growth since 1992 has been 7.4%. And there's only been five years of decline since that time. So at a minimum, we're seeing good growth of about 4%, 5%, 6% a year. And where you'll see that, when we have our Hilltop Security does the analysis for debt, we use much lower assumptions for that. So again, continued growth from assessed values expected.
I would like to read you my 2018 to 2023, I just pulled up my appraisal notice. The difference between your 2018 appraised value and the 2023 appraised value is 87.87%. That's amazing. Can't do anything with it, but that's amazing.
So in our Blue Ribbon presentations, we showed assessed value growth from, I believe, 2000 to 2024. And you saw that steeply inclining blue line that showed the assessed value. And you're right, we've seen some good growth, and I'll bet you it's been averaging 6% or 7% on an annual basis year-over-year since 2000. This, let me get to the next one. This is a chart of the information that was provided in the slide earlier with the table, and it shows the increases in the assessed value. Those are the bars, and then the percentage increases year-over-years align through that. And this is that illustration that I have, actual experience versus what we're using assumption-wise when we determine our debt capacity. And that's just one of the things that helps us stay out of trouble. We will never overshoot that rate growth, so it's a good place to be. So the last five years, the average growth is 13.9% to Ronnie's point. Even if you remove that spike, the last four years of that five-year period, the growth This next table is information that was provided from the Denton Central Appraisal District. There were a number of, there was a meeting that was held earlier in March that included several of the larger taxing entities of the district. Don Spencer, who's the chief appraiser, acknowledged that, or desired input from some of the larger agencies that would have influence or impacts on their upcoming budget. So he wanted to get some information out to us as one of those entities. And you can see the table there with Denton County, some of our neighboring cities, some of the ISDs, and then numbers for our city. So you'll see that for the city of Louisville, the supplemental value, so that's the value from 2023, as it currently stands, is about $21.3 billion. The preliminary taxable value for 2024 is $25.7 billion. That's a 20.8% increase over the previous year, so it's quite incredible. A lot of what's driving that is that middle value, that new taxable value, $636 million in new value, that is value that was not on the rolls last year, that is currently on the rolls now. And just to put that in perspective, last year, when the actual final number was for new growth was $720 million, the value that we had on the preliminary was $671 million. So we're very close to what we were last year. So when earlier, when I made presentations on this and that, they didn't expect us to have $720 million. I was wrong. So we could probably tip scales again at about another $700 million in new value growth, which is great because it spreads the burden of the property tax over more property owners. And yeah, it's just, it's just seen as a positive. So what does this mean to the values of the single-family homes? You can see a table and a chart that shows the growth, and it pretty much mirrors what the overall assessed value growth of the city. So as a single-family home, in 2019, the value was $290,000. Currently, in 2023, that home value is $405,000. Now, again, you can see that spike in 2022. They had to do with bringing the Castle Hills, a single-family home values online. But with them included in the following year, we still had values going up over 10%.
I want to make sure I'm right. Is that, is that mean or median?
That is the average.
The average, so.
Correct.
So we have an outlier demographic that could skew that up? So I always like to look at the median instead of the mean for this stuff, but do we know what the median is?
I don't have it offhand. We did provide it last year during the budget process, so we'll go ahead and pull that again. We'll make sure we have that available.
Thank you.
This pie chart and the figures just above it represent the allocation or the diversification of the property values broken up by single-family, multifamily, commercial, business, personal property, and other, and the change from year-over-year. And a couple of things I just want to point out with this is, one, if you take a look at the pie chart, we're pretty well diversified. So the tax burden is not falling all on the single-family homeowners. We've got industrial and commercial use and multifamily that is responsible for over half of the property tax bill. So I say that's a good thing. Also, for the single-family values, that's at about 46%. That's probably going to remain there, just based on the housing stock that we have and just the way the single-family values have been growing over the last couple of years. So I wouldn't expect a huge change in the allocation, but I would just say that as far as the allocation, it's very well diversified. These next two slides are my favorite slides. They're also my biggest fear. I came on board, we were AAA. On my watch, we're not going to lose AAA. Do the best that I can. It just reflects quite an accomplishment of council and city management and staff over the years. This is not something that we've done in a single year. Just reflects the policies and the practices and the performance of the city over a long period of time, and it is a long-term focus. But I'll just cut to the chase. We've got a AAA bond rating for not only our general obligation bonds, but also for our revenue bonds, which is very rare. I don't have the specific numbers, but in talking to Jason Hughes, it's not common that you're going to have a community that will have a AAA bond rating in GO and in the utility revenue bonds. But we've been able to achieve both. Some of the benefits from the AAA bond rating, lower cost of borrowing, obviously. Our bonds are a lot more competitive, and it generates a lot more interest from those underwriters that are desiring to buy those, buy our bonds. And this AAA rating is a forward-looking measurement. It shows our ability and willingness of debt issuers, us, to meet our financial obligations on time and in full. So when you have an underwriter that's looking at us, they're seeing that we've got the ability to meet long-term our debt obligations. So I just wanted to point out a couple of key points that are made in the write-ups from Standard and Poor's and Fitch about the things that we do here at the city that lead to the AAA. Some of the key rating drivers, as noted by Standard and Poor's, we've got strong expected economic growth. Now, some of that is internally driven by the efforts of our city, but then some of it's just being part of the DFW region. But regardless, they saw that as a positive for us. Strong finances, maintaining solid reserves, that's always been a key point for the city to make sure that we've got those reserves. And they do provide value when it comes to the rating time. And then very strong management with strong financial management policies in place. We've got policies and directives in place that guide the decision-making for council and staff that really served us well over time. From Fitch, they've noted our diverse and stable revenue base. So we do have diversified revenue base between property taxes, sales taxes, and other revenue sources for the city. We have strong revenue growth, and we've seen that. And I think part of that is the way we budget, so we anticipate a little bit less, but we always exceed that, and they note that over time, and they appreciate that. And then lastly, just balanced operations. If we are intentionally drawing down on reserves, that's one thing, but year-over-year, our results of operations, revenues over expenditures, year-over-year has been positive. So with those, all those drivers lead us to have the AAA. Again, we're going to continue to strive to maintain that into the future. Sales tax, we're going to take a little bit longer, a little bit more time with sales tax here, because a lot of things have come up over the last several years, and just the impact that it could have on the city's budget. So we're going to spend a little time there. But before I go, is there any questions about some of the information that I've shared up to now?
No questions. Just going back to, could you go back one slide to the bond rating? I think, you know, it deserves like an exclamation point on the notice by Fitch about being able to reduce expenditures during economic downturns. How we plan for, you know, basically retracting our expenditures and survive that. I mean, it was rough, but it could have been much worse. When we saw, we saw a lot of cities who had a very difficult time.
We saw Fort Worth just get crushed.
Yeah.
And massive reductions in forests, all that.
So I just want, I just want to recognize and kind of put an emphasis on that for people, you know, who have questions about the city. This is a big driver, and when we do go to borrow money to get things done, instead of waiting for the hole to build up to cash pay as you go for a pothole that becomes a car ditch, these are the things that we, it makes borrowing money less expensive and manageable. And I just want to give kudos to the staff, present and past, because it's a relay race we're passing on. So I just want to make sure that we recognize, stop and recognize that for a second.
Okay. This chart shows the sales tax, actuals, prior year actuals along with estimates for the current year. As you can see, we've seen some steady growth over the last several years. Specifically, 2022 to 2023, we saw a .6% increase year-over-year. This year, we are trending at 1.7% over the last year. And point to note that our budget actual, we typically, we regularly exceed budget with our sales taxes, the way we budget for those revenues. And we are 4.4% over budget over the fiscal year, year-to-date. So again, something that, just a positive to note there. That last bullet point speaks to legislation impacting sales tax sources. I'm going to dive into it a little bit deeper in a couple of slides here, but we would not anticipate having an impact in this current fiscal year. The lawsuit and the litigation that's in place, the next trial date is set for October. So at this point, with injunction in place, there shouldn't be, we don't anticipate any impacts this fiscal year. Okay. I think we've all been following the efforts over the past few years for the state legislature and for, more specifically, the Texas Comptroller to move to destination sourcing for determining sales tax remittance. It's being attempted two different ways. One is through legislation, the other is through a rules change that is coming through the Comptroller's office. We're going to just walk you through what staff has done recently to be proactive to these potential changes. And I just want to emphasize that this is potential impacts and some projections that we are making at this point that could impact our sales tax. First thing I want to do is start with some definitions here, just to get everybody understanding where we're at. Currently, we are in a, an environment where it's, sales taxes are determined by origin-sourced sales. So we are origin-based, and this means that the sales taxes are taxed where the seller is. So you walk into a Walmart, you make your purchase there, they're located in Louisville, that's where the sales tax is. We would have a fulfillment center, and the order gets processed through that fulfillment center, it's located in Louisville, the sales taxes remit there. We've used that in Texas for... forever. And for whatever reason, in spite of all the success that we've had with that, there's a desire to move away from that. Where they want to move is to destination-sourced sales. So they are taxed at the location where the buyer takes possession. So quite a bit difference. That's the other extreme. So regardless of what kind of operations you have, if the final destination of that product is outside the city of Lewisville, wherever that location is, that, that community would get credit for those sales taxes.
I've got to say something here, because this is a burr in my bonnet right here. The citizens need to know the type of money we tend to lose if he gets his way. And you don't know why, the reason for the change. I'm going to tell you, it's pandemic number one, when his friend that lives down in that area started losing, and their, their city started going through some financial crisis. All of a sudden, they want a piece of the pie of all the business that they blocked from coming to their town. All of a sudden, they see those that prepared for the winter storm. For years, we're being stable. We're staying stable. All of a sudden, this is a spoon-fed, "I want my piece of the pie, even though I refuse to let you come in here. It's my, it's not fair. It's not fair." That's what's driving this, and it's nothing but a bunch of dag gum cronyism thieves up there. And he's going to keep going because they didn't pass it in the legislature. And citizens, I'm telling you, there's a general election. He's doing it through his rule changes, and he keeps doing it. And before long, we're going to be without millions of dollars, because the good old buddy system, it's not fair. It is absolutely not fair. We have, we have incentives that went with developing our distribution area. I'll shut up in a minute. Okay. They did nothing. They want to stay a bedroom community? Fine. Fund your bedroom community, but don't take it out of my bank account. Because we've paid for this time over time over time over again, getting them here, development incentives and so forth. And citizens of Lewisville, Texas, and those that had distribution centers, we've been in court about this, but they're about to take all of that money out of your pocket. And it's got to be made up somewhere.
I had a question, Dave. Do you happen to know, when you have the sales tax numbers here and a general estimate of what the total sales tax, do you know how that breaks down into, into like some of these distribution centers that we're getting the taxes for, things that are going out? I would assume as far as, for a store that has a physical well, so this is applying to everything, right? So if somebody from, that lives in Frisco comes to our Walmart and buys something, the sales tax goes there?
No.
I was going to say, this is exactly what we're about to go over in the next couple of slides.
Okay. I'm, I'm just curious how it breaks down between what we've got at risk versus what would probably stay the same.
So I'm going to go into further detail over the next several slides.
Okay, I'll wait then.
Nope, that's okay. One of the definitions that I was about to speak to is called a place of business. Now, one of the things that the Comptroller is trying to do is to change the definition, definition for what a place of business is. Currently, a place of business is a location where business is conducted, goods, services are made or stored, or services rendered, and there are three or more in-person sales. So for a place of business, as long as there is three or more in-person sales for that, then it is a place of business that's located in the community that it resides. So for a business that provides both in-person sales and online sales, as long as that, that minimum three is met, then we get to keep those. Full destination removes that completely. That's why you see such a big projected impact on our sales taxes.
Yeah. So when he said current, so I just want to make sure it's clear. So currently, origination, right, based. What the rule proposal is, is that point of business where if you have three or more in-person sales, right, those, you get to count towards your city. So then we, and he'll go through this, we had to do an analysis as best we could because you rely on, on your businesses to tell you how their operations are, and we'll go through that in a little bit. But do you actually have people coming in and buying? And then if it's full destination, well, even if you have three people coming in and buying, if, you'll get to count those three that came in and buy, but it doesn't make your entire business sidest in Lewisville. So everyone else who's buying separate, it goes to them. So it goes from best for Lewisville is the way it is now, second best is rules change, and third best is destination, full destination, which is what the legislature had done.
Worst case.
What'd you say?
I said that would be worst case.
Worst, yeah. And the legislation didn't pass, but we have the analysis on all of it.
I would just say, this is just bad tax law. It, it's making it difficult for the company, for the communities who've invested in companies to put their businesses in cities. And it's, it's assisting, let's be clear on who's assisting. It's assisting company, I mean, municipalities where they don't want these businesses at, the bedroom communities that don't want this. And it's, it's basically, they're looting the coffers of cities who made that investment. You know, it's basically helped a few, and you can figure out the word, the many. And, you know, the only way that we can correct this, and Ronnie, I think, is right on the point, this is something that isn't a, we have to have an electoral solution for this, to have people who are in place, who are making thoughtful law, and how it impacts different communities. Because we're different than Flower Mountain, Flower Mountain, and that is perfectly fine. But they're putting one, one rule that fits all that helps very few communities. And it's very concerning, and it keep, they can't get one thing done through legislative process, now they're trying to do it through rules. And so people who are watching this, you need to be aware of this, and you need to talk to the proper state officials about this and to get this corrected.
And it's, it's not unlike the Robin Hood. They're taking our tax dollars and putting them someplace else.
Yeah. This is, so Ronnie stole my line. This is a B in my bonnet as well. This is, I feel passionate about this, just as I think everybody else does up here. I went down to Austin last, last session to speak about this as well. And the arguments that I heard in favor of this, I couldn't even get my mind around it. It was, well, there's only 10, there's only 10 cities that have these warehouses, so therefore the rest of the municipality should benefit from that. There's only 10. I'm like, but that's a terrible reason to do something, just because there's 10. To reiterate the points, we've invested for years into infrastructure in ways that other cities, for their own reasons, just decided they didn't want to do. And that's okay. You run your city, we'll run our city. But to then go through and change the rules after the fact, there's an electoral remedy for this. My fear is that people will vote in what they feel are their best interests and not what's morally correct to do. And that this is, this is a moral stance as much as anything else. Even if it weren't the finances involved, it's the things that we invested in. There's, you know, the cement that has to go onto a road to support the big 18-wheelers that to go back and forth, much more expensive than the cement that supports what, amounts to a minivan of an Amazon truck driving around to deliver things. So these, these types of arguments of infrastructure is also impacted by the Amazon trucks, UPS trucks. I don't buy it. It's just, it's a excuse to come in and raid and off of the backs of what we've, we've put in place over the years.
Okay. Reaching to the choir. Just real quick, again, to Councilman Brandon's point here, they tried legislation two times, '21 and '23, it failed. The first rules were presented to cities in 2020. It was from those that there was a lawsuit that was, two lawsuits that were started. Since that time, the Comptrollers amended their rules changes a number of times to address maybe some of the concerns. And they're still trying to find a way to get those in place. So that's where we're at right now. So we sought the assistance of a consultant that's very well-versed in this area. His name is John Kroll, HMWK. He's worked with the Castle Group, which is the sales tax group that we've been affiliated with in the past. He's worked on state and national level sales tax issues. He's very, very good at what he does. And we asked him to conduct an analysis, addressing both of those threats that we have. The first is the full destination move, and the others is from the rules changes. Again, there's just a slight variation between those two approaches, but they both have a significant impact on the, on the city. The analysis that was performed initially was based using Texas and national data sets, so not specific to Lewisville, but taking these data sets like income level, number of households, percent taxable purchases, and population to come up with those estimated losses or the impacts from moving to these. Just a couple of things to note. Again, our proximity to the DFW region, we still have the benefit of that, plus our own economics of the city of Lewisville, where we generally outperform the state and the nation as far as the sales tax. And so it's not a one-to-one correlation, the estimate that we get from, from these initial figures, but they're pretty, pretty close to what we could expect. So the first has to do with the move to destination sourcing. This is mentioned earlier. This would be like a worst-case scenario of what we could expect to lose if these were to get put in place. Again, I want to remind everybody, these are potential impacts from moving away from origin sourcing. We're doing some work on the backend to get more specific impacts, but at least this is, gives us some good foundation to start from. Some key points I want to make here, if we were to move or if we were required to move to destination sourcing, significant loss under this model, and the place of business designation is nullified or removed. So Quer's comments earlier about if we had three or more sales at a location, we would get credit for all those sales. Now, with destination sourcing, we get to keep those three sales. Everything else that doesn't land in the city of Lewisville, we would lose that. So that's why the impact is quite significant. So based on these Texas and national data sets, we would expect the loss in sales tax to be about $15.4 million. Now, just to put that in context, the total sales tax that the city receives on an annual basis is about $62, $63 million. So about 25% of the total. And this is net gains, net of any gains for goods and service coming into the city because of the change.
So just to clarify, so that 15.4, again, the, the calculation from the prior slide is dealing with very high-level assumptions, right? So this isn't drilling down at all. And we're going to talk about how we tried to drill down in a little bit. And it is only talking about our loss. So the next slide is going to, I know, I know, before we start, don't post this picture because it's not the full, the full story until the second slide and third slide.
I will say that when, when I was in Austin, talking about this and speaking, speaking to the legislature about this, this, this was a common theme amongst the cities that were me. Capel was there and some other cities were impacted. And I want to tell you straight up, guys, the, the attitude of everybody who's listening up there was sucks to be you. They really didn't care. All they knew is that it's going to bring more money to their cities. This is, this is significant for us. And they just did, that, that argument fell completely flat on the ears that were listening up there in Austin.
So we talked about the impacts from moving to full destination sourcing. This is some information regarding what we would anticipate the impacts from the full implementation of the rules changes that the Comptroller is, has proposed. The loss, while less or lessened than a move to full destination, is still considerable. The place of designation remains in place, and so we would continue to receive all those sales taxes as long as the business was recognized as a place of business, receiving three or more sales every year. And that's the effort on the backend that staff is trying to determine using specific data from the city. Gains in revenue are not currently captured under the original, or the origin sourcing rules and statutes. There is some, so there is some gains, but overall, based on these data sets that are being used, we are still a net loser in the sales tax. So where destination sales, we anticipated a loss of 15.4. The loss under rules 3.334 implementation is about $10.5 million.
So just to, just to clarify again, just want to make sure, this is not in addition to the 15. This is, 15 is with full destination, this is with, which include, which would include this. So, and then you just get some relief if you're just doing the rules, which would get you to 10.5 because he's reflected the gains we would get.
So there are, there are business to business and business to customer gains of about $5 million that account for the difference between the full destination and the rules change. So what we wanted to do is, with this information is to show, based on the way we allocate our sales taxes, what the impacts would be, whether it be destination sourcing or rules changes. The losses to the general fund, based on these models, range from $7 million to $10.3 million in the general fund, 1.75 to 2.5 in the 4B fund, and for the fire and crime funds, $875,000 to $1.3 million annually. Again.
Does this mean we get to blame the Comptroller for defunding the police? I'm just asking.
Again, this is not a direct correlation to the city of Lewisville. We're using these Texas and national data sets to formulate this baseline. But again, I think this is still a word to the Y, so potential losses that the city could feel if these were to go in place.
I, I need to say something that any media that's out there, fact-based media, the rest of them, go back to bed. If you don't highlight this section, if you're writing about this retreat, and you don't make this front and center to all of our residents, and not just us, we're talking Capel, Frisco, all of them, we're going to be facing the same thing. If the media doesn't take this and educate the public before the November elections, this will have a direct impact on your property taxes. If you take the air out of this tire over here, it's going to have an impact.
I would actually venture to say that it's going to have an impact on the services you receive, because the, the state has already given a, a lot of constraints regarding what we can do with property tax. So if they want to, they kind of cut us there, if they cut us in the sales tax too, we can't provide the services that we're providing now.
I wonder if that's what they want.
For clarity, how many times has it been tried to go through legislation and failed? At least twice, right?
2021 and 2023 legislative sessions.
So we've had twice where it's been taken to the democratic process and failed, and now that's being circumvented through rules changes, what is my interpretation. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay.
I had one thing just to add to Kristin's point. A reduction in service level will probably occur on the sales tax side, because on the sales tax funds, like the 4B, crime and fire, we don't have the ability to increase property tax to cover that decrease. So you have just a decrease there. On the general side, you do have the ability, if you wanted to, at some point, to go to an election, to try and get that property tax value back up. But that's a whole separate involved process and not an easy process. It's, and it's not easily recouped in just one year. But, so I do think it would be a mix of trying to find additional revenue sources to make up the difference, as well as a reduction in service level.
And also, just wanted to remind everyone what we were talking about. And also, just wanted to remind everyone what we were talking about yesterday with all of the utility infrastructure that we've got to figure out how to fund as well. The discussion we had yesterday afternoon, we have a lot of needs, and we have a, an aging city that's got aging infrastructure that needs to be replaced. And this impacts our ability to do that. And once, we're already behind, just like every other city is. This would put us further behind. I don't see how we could catch up.
I, one other, one other question is, how do businesses handle the nightmare of bookkeeping to keep track of the destination? That's, that's an additional thing that is just mind-boggling to me. I mean, if, if they go to, you know, destination, destination, you know, taxing, then the business has to know where it's, where it's going to. And so they have to, they have to collect the taxes for all of those destinations. I mean, it's a nightmare.
You bring up a really good point, and that was actually highlighted by one of the speakers in Austin. There are states that have done this, and they've had 10, 12 jurisdictions that they have to deal with. In Texas, it's hundreds. And there's a gentleman that went up there, and he was showing the paperwork change that would have to, that would be, that would occur to even small businesses of stacks of papers that would have to be filed to make this work. Now, the comeback was, well, we can worry about that, we worry about that. Yeah, good luck with that. But it, the burden that it places on, not, not just big businesses, not just the Walmarts of the world, but, but with, you know, the small businesses that are, that have a shop online, it's incredibly burdensome. It's a, it's a horrible, horrible idea.
Okay, so we had talked about the impacts from destination sourcing and the rules change. We use some high-level data sets to come up with those numbers. So then we follow that up with our own analysis of Lewisville-specific businesses and the sales tax that are remitted by the various businesses there. The information that we have here is from data from 2023, actual city of Lewisville data. Again, this is a preliminary analysis, we're still doing a deep dive. We have a, a community of over 3,000 businesses that remit sales taxes to the city, and from this analysis here, we've tried, we're dealing with information from 44 of them. But 44 of them account for about 23% of all the sales tax, so we think that's a good proxy. If we can determine what the impacts are on those 44, then I think that gives us a generally impact across, across the board of all of our sales tax remittors. What we did is we reached out to businesses that had the highest threat assessment or the highest at-risk sales taxes from either moving from a, from where we're at now to destination sourcing or for, to the rules changes. So we started by reaching out, first identifying those 44 businesses, and then we started having staff reach out to contact those businesses. And these are the results of our analysis here. So of those 44 businesses, we were successful in contacting 19 of those, which account for $8.1 million in sales tax. Of those 19, based on the responses that we received from those businesses, we feel that 14 will potentially escape the rules changes, which accounts for $5.7 million. But there are five businesses that are potentially at risk from the rules change totaling $2.4 million. So some of the questions that we asked to help determine place of business were, do you accept walk-in sales? Do you hold inventory onsite? Do you fulfill orders onsite? Do you have salespeople that work through that particular business? So those are all indicators that it could be considered a place of business, which then would allow us to retain those sales taxes. Of those 44, again, we reached out to 19, where we're successful, successful with getting information from that, those businesses. Of those 25 remaining businesses, we did an analysis, and we used some of the assistance from John Kroll to determine which one would potentially escape the rules change and which ones wouldn't. So of those remaining 25, we think that 16 escaped those rules changes totaling $3.6 million, meaning we keep those sales taxes. Nine are potentially at risk totaling $3.1 million. So we're still early in the process. We've been doing this for about the last 30 days. We're continuing to work on these, this analysis, and then probably by budget workshop, we should have a little more information that we can provide to council. So the total potential loss by moving the rules change based on these 44 businesses is about $5.5 million. Again, this isn't hard and fast. The comptroller can designate whether or not we meet the muster as far as place of business. Again, it's up to comptroller interpretation, but we feel pretty comfortable with this analysis so far.
So counsel, on this slide, I just wanted to touch, I'm not going to read all of this, but it really provides a good history of the litigation related to this because even though the comptroller is making these changes in the rules, nothing's gone into effect because there's an injunction in place. So May 22, 2020, the comptroller first came up with this rule. There was a lawsuit that was filed in '21 by the Coalition, Coalition for Appropriate Sales Tax Law enactment, Castle. When you hear us say Castle, that is that group. That's the city of Capella, Umbold, De Soto, Carrollton, Farmers Branch, and there's a separate litigation from Round Rock versus the comptroller's office. So they agreed in '21 to have an injunction, a temporary injunction, and that would apply statewide. So everyone who would have been affected by this, such as us, got the benefit of that injunction. And it was put in place saying, you're not, we're not going to put this in place and start enforcing this rule until this litigation is complete. In '22, August 2022, the district court found that the comptroller failed to substantially comply with the procedural requirements for adopting those rules. So they went back and then followed those procedural requirements and came back with virtually the same rules in January 2024. We were told at that point, well, they felt that they could then just start enforcing it. The lawyers, not our lawyers, but their lawyers apparently talked together and then agreed, okay, yeah, we're still under this temporary injunction, we're not going to enforce anything. We're waiting for the lawsuit to happen, to get finished. So that was all planned for a May 2024 trial date, and so we were expecting we would have that information of what was going to happen prior to our next budget year. But now the comptroller has gone back and decided they're going to do a fourth amendment to the rule. And that fourth amendment is to say they're going to address the potential financial impacts the rules will have on local jurisdictions and business communities. And so that would push the trial date to October. So we will not know when doing our budget, what's going to happen with sales tax. So I wanted to make you aware of that. Also, the interesting thing is when you talk, when they talk about trying to come up with the impact, the financial impact on local jurisdictions, you can see, to really understand that, we've had to call all of our individual businesses, which half of them, it's hard getting in contact with the right person who has the right information, so I'm not quite sure how that financial analysis will be finely tuned. So I just wanted to let you know about that. Before, and we will talk about how this goes into our recommendation towards the end, but we're going to move on to some of our other revenue at this point. So I did want to introduce you to, I think you guys have all know her, but I wanted to introduce the whole room and the public to Ashley Carlisle. She's our budget manager. She's just recently been promoted. She was originally, she has a master's in public administration. She used to be a fire, our fire admin analyst, and we stole her from the fire department and brought her to the city manager's office as a budget analyst, and we've just recently promoted her up. And go for it.
I'm sorry, before we move on, one more quick thing. So if we go back one. So I'm, I'm reading between the lines here, and I may be completely off-base, but it says, we understand the only thing this amendment will be addressing is the potential financial impact the rule could have on local jurisdictions. This sounds suspiciously like what was proposed in the legislation, which is a five-year grandfather. So if that's, if that's more the same, then that's still not acceptable. So that's, so.
Okay, moving on to some of our additional revenues that we're seeing this year, the chart that you see in front of you is our building permit revenue. When we do these estimates, we base this on actual projects that the city is aware of, not necessarily trend-based, so you can see some fluctuation from year to year. What you see here, as Dave mentioned earlier when we were talking about sales tax, in yellow, you see actuals of the prior year, and then that far right column is our revised estimate for the current year, and the blue line indicates the adopted budget for that year. So when we look at fiscal year 2022, you see that large jump. That was related to some specific Castle Hills projects, such as the realm and then residential phase 10. And then taking a look at 2023, we actually ended the year at 95% over our adopted budget. So you see that blue line smack dab in the middle of that yellow bar there. Now, when we take a look at 2024, it's a little bit of a different story. We're actually projecting a 16% decrease in our building permit revenue this year. This is because some of our larger projects were expecting to occur possibly in fiscal year 2025 instead of 2024. Thank you. And those projects, that sounds a lot better. All right. Those projects are the Hamptons, Lakeside Crossing, multifamily and commercial, and then Alley Parkway Business Park as well. But I did want to mention that our building services division has identified other projects that will be occurring this year that were not taken into account in those original projections. Shifting gears a little bit, talking about hotel-motel occupancy rates, what this chart shows you is that we have indeed returned to pre-COVID levels. We showed you this chart last year. It's nice to just see another year tacked on there to show that consistency. The 2024 information is not on this chart yet, but what I can tell you is that for January and February, we saw very similar occupancy rates to those same two months last year. And then something that we have to look forward to here in the next few weeks is our solar eclipse. And I say our solar eclipse, we've got an event going on, so it'll be interesting to see how our occupancy rates increase. And then if I recall correctly, that's also council member Troyer's birthday, so maybe next year you can report on a happy birthday memory to us. And then talking about the revenue specifically for this fund, for 2023's actuals, we saw a 7.2% increase when compared to 2022's actuals. And then looking at 2024, we're projecting to end the year at about 1.1% over last year's actuals. This would be about $584,000 over the current adopted budget. Then when we talk about utility fund, the actuals that we saw in 2023 increased by about 5% when compared to fiscal year 2022. This came out to about $2.7 million. This was due to a rate increase that was adopted by city council as well as new development in the city. As a reminder, council approved a rate increase last year for 4.3% for both water and sewer. Then when we look at 2024, our estimated revenue is projected to be just over $5 million more than last year's actuals. And I did want to remind counsel, this revenue source is heavily dependent on the weather. So when we have hotter months, we see more water use, we see more revenue, vice versa. When we have colder, wetter months, we typically see less water use and less revenue. So because of that, we monitor this revenue source fairly closely throughout the year. And then we have a similar story here with the drainage fund. Fiscal year 23's actuals increased significantly, 34% when compared to fiscal year 2022. Again, this is due to a rate increase as well as new development in the city. For 2024, city council approved a $1 per month rate increase for single-family and 35 cents per 1,000 square foot rate increase for non-single-family. Say that three times fast. The 2022 NewGen Drainage Study was a three-year plan. The third year of that plan would be for fiscal year 2025, and you can see that rate increase plan pretty significantly on this chart. You saw a jump in 2023, another jump that we're predicting in 2024, and then the final year of that three-year plan would be in 2025. For 2024's estimated revenue, we are looking to be just shy of over $1 million as compared to 23's actuals. So to provide you with an overall summary of what Dave, Marichelle, and I have talked to you about today, our current revenue for the current fiscal year is positive, but the future of sales tax sourcing is uncertain. We're also going to be tracking building permit revenue closely, and then we'll continue to monitor inflation rates and interest rates as well. Okay, moving into the last portion of our presentation today, staff will bring the budget calendar to city council during retreat every year to determine if council would like to include the option for an election. The budget calendar is based on very specific state laws and our regularly scheduled city council meetings. Now, state law does require different deadlines depending on whether or not an election is called to increase that property tax above the voter approval rate. So the option that you see here would be if we were to continue without the option for an election. The dates that you see here are very, very similar to what we had last year. It's just shifted by maybe a day or two. We would receive the certified tax rolls on or before July 25th. Then we would have our budget workshop on Saturday, August 10th. And then moving into September, that first city council meeting in September would be September 9th. This would be when you would hold the public hearing and the vote on the budget. And then during the second meeting in September, on the 16th, you would hold the public hearing and vote on the tax rate. As compared to this option, this would be the election option. So a lot of these deadlines shift up and get compacted earlier in the summer. We would actually have to submit the preliminary budget to you before we received the certified tax rolls, and that's because we have to submit the budget at least 30 days before the vote on the tax rate. So with this option, we would have our budget workshop on August 3rd instead of August 10th. And then on August 16th, we would have a special session for city council to hold the public hearing and the vote on the budget. And then just a few days later, on August 19th, we would have the public hearing and vote on the tax rate. And I wanted to mention, this is also the deadline for council to call for an election. So to recap what we've talked about so far, Dave talked a lot about property tax revenue increases that we think we'll see. Overall, our other current year revenue is trending upwards. We will keep an eye on building permit revenue. And I wanted to talk a little bit more about that potential sales tax impact that was Lewisville-specific. So we talked about that $5.5 million loss. What that would look like if we were to spread that out over our funds would be $3.67 million to the general fund, $458,000 to each the crime control fund and fire control fund, and then $917,000 4B. Now, council may recall, when you adopted the fiscal year 2024 budget, $2 million of that was held back to fund one-time expenses. So we could take that out if we needed to in future year. That would leave an impact to the general fund of about $1.67 million. To put that into perspective, we budgeted just shy of $130 million in revenue to the general fund. Based on these economic indices and the pushed trial date for the Castle litigation, staff's recommendation is to proceed without the option of an election for fiscal year 2025.
I also wanted to just make sure counsel realize that just with our, our amount of avalorum tax growth, we will likely be having to do a reduction in tax rate this year.
So I, I appreciate this discussion. There's a couple of other things that I think, if we had to go to an election, that kind of convolute what we would have to do in my mind, some of the disadvantages of also going to an election beyond just the, the calendar impacts coming up to calling a public hearing, that actual election would happen in November, right? Which would be after our fiscal year starts. So we essentially would have to work up two separate budgets based on whether or not that, the, the election passed or if it failed. So that's a lot of additional work on staff. And then also just the uncertainty of trying to go into a calendar year, not really knowing what we're going to have. And I also feel like, especially with costs for housing going through the roof, as we discussed earlier in this presentation, I think going to an election is going to be a real hard sale.
I think, I think we have significant growth, so I think we can avoid the complexity of having imperfect information on not having all of our property tax information. So I'm, I'm all about trying to keep it as simple as possible, and, and, you know, we will look into the, cutting the rate and see what that looks like.
Ditto.
I just, I just want to make one comment on city manager's statement about the possibility or probability of having to reduce the property tax. What, what is the burr under my saddle is that even if we do reduce the property tax, the verbiage we have to put in the ordinance will verbiage we have to put in the ordinance will say this represents a tax increase. And that really rubs me the wrong way. Even if we have, even if we do a reduction, we still have to say that it's an increase. And that's all I'll say.
I think we have consensus on this one. Do we have lunch in the back?
We have, yes, we ordered lunch. I think it's ready.
I'd like to do that as a working lunch.
Okay.
So if we could take, you know, our 10-minute bio break here, but let's get prompt to come back because I'd like to see if we can't get this in under 2:00. Thank you. We're going to take a break, 10 minutes, and grab your lunch and be right back. We're going to hand this off to Mr. Dan Johnson. Dan?
Thank you, Mayor. Happy to make this a working lunch. You all have been moving through a lot and certainly some wrap-up work here. But as we talked about yesterday with the God Janus and this whole idea of points of view, you have in this agenda and all your work planned of the last day or so been very focused on this idea of looking backward, looking forward. Staff over and over again mentioned the kind of a recap and the efforts getting ready to step forward. Obviously, you've been in this outward-looking effort, but I think for a real comprehensive agenda, I really applaud you for asking me to join with you and perhaps take a minute to kind of look inward. Remember our little warm-up exercise this morning, kind of like the nature of, it's your first job, but also were there instructions involved with that? And isn't it interesting when it comes to governance that we are kind of put together here, but how would you, how much would you characterize had instructions that came with it when you first joined onboard? And each of you can dip back into that kind of experience and think about that. So happy to come along with this idea of a checklist to perhaps be involved with you as you continue to think about things that are impactful, not only to the community. Did you not go through a lot of checklists over the last day or so? And what are those? Many of those were confirming things. And I think the interesting things about this is certainly that you as Council are all about the right things. What are we doing? Are these the right things we should be working on? And certainly Claire and the team focusing on getting the things right in what they deliver. And so we're trying to get the right things right as a team, very importantly. And I think that also includes this thought of also, in an impactful way, making sure that our governance is doing the right things right. And obviously, that's about work that you all do among and with yourself because of how impactful that is to generate and drive so many other things from that. So what we know is that can happen is we want to get the things right and we don't want to have errors. And then you can take for a second to talk about, well, what are the errors that are possible to happen? One of them is the errors of what I call errors of ignorance. I did not know. I just didn't know. And I think that's a very common thing. So we continue to be open to energy and ideas that would increase the thoughts of knowing more. And boy, what is the inquiry and the staff work and let's get facts and let's be fact-based? All of that is all about this kind of trying to figure out that first one is the errors of ignorance. What we oftentimes, and I think is actually candidly, the more chance for errors is an error of ineptitude. And that is, it's a weird word, has a lot of value kind of associated with it, but I would say if it, at its base, it's about you had the information and you didn't make the proper use of it in the right time and the right way. It's an application challenge and an error that way. One of the folks that I think was really interested in doing this drew from surgery background. I don't know if you've had a chance to read an Atul Gawande book, a couple, about 15-year-old book here, but a surgeon up in the Northeast area, also wrote another book, really good book called Better, came out, New York bestsellers about 15 or so years ago. Your library has them, I'm sure. But I will tell you, was very interesting as he thought about particularly in that setting of surgery, surgery, the importance and impacts of using checklists as an important kind of way to make sure that we were doing the right things right. And in that regard, why? Because it would help you not forget something. The idea you get busy or you do respectfully get on focuses, but in having focuses, you don't remember that you have this whole wider perspective. So helping you not forget things, helping you sometimes also unbundle the overwhelming and begin to say, it does have parts and pieces, let's take a little bit of time to do that. And I don't know really if you've ever bumped into a conversation and say, what are the parts and pieces of governance, of the work you do and the work you start out with? And then obviously, the idea of what are the essential things? What must we make sure we do? And then obviously, let's not miss a step. And then certainly, it can counterbalance, as I said, these focus moments. Really was an excellent book. And out of that caused me to kind of think about, because I've done this for a lot of years, been connected with a lot of folks, and said, you know, I don't know that I've ever run across a real good list of things that were really in one place which summarize this impact of governance. And so Mayor and Council, what I'd like to do with you is take you through a list of about 10 things that, see if they don't resonate with you, as dimensions of governance. And why am I going through a list like this and why do we have a checklist? First of all, I want you for, I will tell you, as an observer, to be comfortable and celebrate the checks you can put into so many of these dimensions and areas. But we'll talk at the very end about what can you do more than just to check? And so we'll talk about that as we go forward here. So here are the 10 right away. So you'll find them as a master list if you ever need this as a handout or something later on. But let's go through each of them and with each of those, take a minute to really think about some thoughts that might be within. I only have created about three for each area, but let's go into the first one. This very first one, very charter-driven on behalf of a responsibility of the governance. I mean, so where do you get your list of the governance ideas? First of all, it's kind of like, well, did anyone give me any instructions? Yes, you did have some instructions periodically confirmed by the community through a thing called a charter, your constitution. And by the way, you go look at the council section of that and it has some very good important information of what are your duties in that regard? So the very first one up there is, guess what? Your duty includes this important responsibility for the appointments and the delegates that are ways that you do business and conduct your efforts. So first of all is charter requires you to make very important, make them and maintain these quality officer appointments. There's three or four mostly in every community. I'm looking at one over here through your city manager. I'm looking at one through your two over here. So the point is the importance of making those appointments and because of the delegated duties of what they do, maintaining the quality appointments, the dialogue, the performance reviews, the conversations that go on because they are agents for you as a charter has described this strategy of deployment, correct? And the second one is, and don't forget these folks, is to make and maintain quality advisory board appointments. And so right there is the important kind of set of things of how do you sit there and multiply your impact and the kind of quality of decision-making and policymaking is the importance of making and maintaining quality advisory board appointments. A third dimension of this area around appointments and delegates is the important set of folks that you send away from the city, carrying Lewisville business to other forums and settings beyond your borders. I said in my community and community that I've worked in the past, kind of like, if you think that your work is only within the square mileage of your city, you're wrong. In a metro setting most particularly, you are being spoken about in all kinds of other forums and settings. And we know of those in this region because of service connectivities, DCTA, Upper Trinity, COG, RTC, you know, the list is richer and robust and goes from community to community. Do not underestimate that through your delegate, who is that person that's representing our purpose, our motives, our agenda in those forums and settings? How often do they come and make a connection with you? Because it should be a two-way thing. Feedback to you about what's going on and your feedback to them as to what is the next step and tactically what we want to have them help us do. Three quick things on behalf of just that feature of appointments and delegates. Any quick reaction to that? Gulp, swallow, okay, chip, chip and mouth?
I think this is one of the things I'm most proud of in my time as Mayor is that this Council has stepped up and taken on a lot of these agency ambassador types of roles, that we have a much bigger voice at the table regionally and locally and within the county. And I couldn't be more proud of our city, our staff and our Council. Because it's one thing to have staff go do these things. It is a completely different thing when an elected official sits there in the room and has the input. Those agencies listen a lot more.
It struck me, I'm pretty active in some regional forums and such, and it is your mayor, it was during COVID that was offering regional leadership, certainly was personal to your community, but offering those experiences and his expertise in regional settings. I think this is a big one. And particularly, it's a metro secret sauce for those that decide they really want to be in there or not.
It's definitely the secret sauce, these agencies and whatnot, to the growth that North Texas is seeing. Because the amount of planning and pre-planning and thinking that goes into where roads go, where infrastructure goes, how the communities work together, when grants from the state or from the federal level, when that money opens up, we have a direction that we hand to them. And you know what? Most of the time, we get more than our fair share in this metro area, which means Lewisville can get more than its fair share too, which is great.
Great. Thank you for that comment. Let's go into the next area of responsibility is this oversight and performance monitoring. That's a label I give to it, but it's all about because you caused things to be delegated and carried out by others, this important responsibility to remind yourself under oversight and performance monitoring that you are a municipal officer. You, I'm looking at seven of them. And as a municipal officer of the city, it is a buck stops here responsibility. You delegate, you say, yeah, but that person was, no, kind of at the end of the day, that final accountability, as you well know, is yours. And so I always want to remind folks of that responsibility. It's kind of the seduction of it being appointed or delegated can sometimes take away from the fact that it is still yours. And so that accountability, that oversight, to make sure that's happening, again checklist-wise, to kind of go, how are we doing in regard to that? Another one, certainly a very formal structure is your external auditor. Once a year, coming with that report, giving you a summation of other controls and other things that are matters, listening to that carefully, assuming and receiving that duty as part of that work as well. And then certainly, what you were so vivid about over this last day or so, just an excerpt that I witnessed here, is this attention to service delivery, mission outcomes and goal achievement. What kind of systems you have in place and what cities have in place or don't have in place to make sure that this bulk of the work is happening on the right things the right way is a huge piece. What were you doing the last day or so? This. You were doing a lot of this. But I wanted to remind you, that is your second kind of dimension of your responsibilities is to be involved in oversight and performance monitoring. Other thoughts or questions on that one? Let's move on to another thing you might add to your checklist. Stewardship and fiscal attention. This one really explores this important responsibility of the blessing of resources that have been created in the community and you're asked to be the steward of those, making those wise choices of those, that balance and sequence. And certainly, as a few of you through a dialogue I had with you, mentioned this idea, we want to get the balance right. We want to make sure that even as we talk about some lofty things, that's a phrase I use sometimes, loftier things, that is built under a kind of a Maslow hierarchy rationale of are we getting the basics right? Are we getting the basics right? And is that balance looking right? As the collective community would say, what is going on with regard to how are you spending our money? And that's going to, I'm going to get to that in a minute. And the second dimension of that is the interesting word stewardship. All kinds of background around that word powerfully because it represents this idea of an agent taking other people's resources and being responsible for the custodianship of those resources, right? And that stewardship. And out of that is this interesting dimension that goes on, again, almost a kind of a Janus kind of feature of a privilege to reap. Others have done stuff in the past that you are enjoying the fruits of. And with due respect to credit you will take on things, I loved how many of you said, and the people that have come before us, the bedrock, the foundational work that they did on something, because that is, this first part of this is privilege to reap. You enjoy those things, the water you're drinking, the roads you drive on, someone did that in the past or they wouldn't be here for you now. So you know what the flip coin on that is, the kind of look back, look forward to that is the part B of this. What is your duty to sow? Kind of on your watch, what are the things that are the imperatives imperative? What must we do? What must we do now? Because in terms of seed and seed germination and seed-bearing fruit, there is a time to plant. And there is this sense of, we've got to remember that even as we enjoy the harvest of these things that have come, we are duty-bound to go into and study these things that need to be sown so that there are fruits coming forward. Chris mentioned it earlier, this powerful time of infrastructure is kind of like, as things come due and need to be refreshed and replaced, boy, that duty to sow is also this duty to re-sow or to refresh as well. So all those are in that concept of stewardship. And then finally, I would offer to you under stewardship and fiscal attention is this rigorous attention to O and M. Rigorous attention to the operating and maintenance cost of those things that you decide to activate and build. And that's, that kind of comes right away. Sometimes you know the price tag of that. Sometimes you'll have grants and other dumb things that go on. It's kind of like, well, we got a little separation between the cost of building it or the cost of building it had some initial life that didn't need maintenance. And so there's a kind of a separation in time that goes on with that. Well, I don't need to start refurbishing or replacing and I'm enjoying the fact that the paint's still drying. Okay, that's true. So you almost set up, how it sets up possibility, the separation of the capital effort initially becoming an operation and maintenance issue. So I would tell you though, but the attention to O and Ms. and the intention now to start watching the fueling of those O and Ms., conversation you just had, pretty powerful in that regard. And certainly going forward here is making sure that between lofty and basics, that that balance is there and that many of the neater things to have in that community, there is a way that they're going to be able to be taken care of O and M-wise without a impact on the baseline O and M. Turned into a whole financial conversation, but just this idea of stewardship and fiscal attention resonates with you all. I see a lot of nods on that one. Let's go on to the next one. Your deliberation and decision-making. Your major forum of getting together is a council dais on the frequency of your meetings. That is your game day. It is where you conduct your business. Things are happening. And in fact, looking at that as your most major forum and a modeling of public discourse that goes on that. There is a formal forum, there's a way that happened and the Lewisville way of how information is prepared, discussed, deliberated, all those things happen in that forum and setting. It's not chaos, it's organized, you're going to know when it's happening, you're going to know where it's happening. And how that's conducted itself is all dimensions of this deliberation process. Another one is the sense of, as I submit to you, is this idea of a good sense of time. Greeks had two words for the word time. One was chronos, watch time. The other one was Kairos, it's the right time. And I would tell you, that sense and dialogue that you have of schedules needs to be a schedule that's an intensive schedule around the chronos of the year and the years and the Kairos of the year. When are going to be the right times for this? What have we done as the preamble's to make this next thing sequentially seem right in the right time? Your chronos and Kairos conversations sometimes are as important as just merely performing it, is getting it in the right time. It's going to be received better. We all have the preliminary information, all of those things to set that up. And then obviously, thinking through, Mayor, sometimes you have an important piece of this responsibility and the pace setting of this, but this idea of taking you through a decision. What is that agenda every week? Anything but? It's all about decisions you're going to make. And some of those have been well-prepared and researched. Some of them are like a public hearing though on a zoning case. And it's going to have its own little kind of arc of consideration. It's going to begin with what is the problem ID? I have been very impressed with this next thing is that what is the data to be involved with that? I would tell you, a lot of communities, this isn't strong and it's kind of like, oh, we probably need, or they flounder on past it by not having data. I'm very impressed with the data dimension in this community. Certainly then this idea of discussion and input, and I'm unbundling this kind of, well, Dan, we know this, but kind of, no, look at them very deliberately. And I say that because when you come on through them, you discuss and identify solution possibilities. And then after that discussion, you make a decision. Deciding itself should be a kind of a done and it should be the exhaustive conclusion to that which you did ahead of time so that when you decide, it is decided, doesn't have remnants of reconsideration and it doesn't, and it's kind of like, it's done. And then we go on and then we also have this have this interesting support of the others and making sure that the group had that chance. We all did our process and all that. All of that is around having a artful, effective way that you govern through a very deliberate intention around your deliberations and decision-making. That's the fourth one. Let's go to the fifth one. Mission-driven. Goals and planning and mission-driven. And the important part of that is they're vivid because they are effective formats to turn those things that you desire for your community into actions. Many of these conversations and briefings you received today began as a what could we do if? Or, boy, Lewisville needs this. Aspirational. And yet you're trying to turn those aspirations into actions. The staff relishes clarity around goal-setting and missions. It tells us how to achieve the things you translate and desire for the community into actions. Do not underestimate the power of goal and mission articulation. And certainly with that is the periodic refreshing of those as we are doing and will do here in just a minute. You can't plan enough, as well as obviously this extensive planning, but also the important thing that it does. Because if that planning has important input and option exploration and other forms of consensus building, you can honor and respect that it is kind of a rendered way that we've tried to figure out where to go next. And this idea of checking on progress, seeking feedback, making edits, all those things are the ongoing techniques of how to make sure that your goal planning and missions are well-accomplished. This last piece of this one is important too, because goals and plannings and missions, you can either be hesitant to take big bites, or you can sit there and have big bites be so big that they have a kind of a, they almost are daunting. Or thirdly, you can get lost in the fact that we're never going to celebrate success until it's done. And what is that generationally in terms of it being sometimes weeks, months, years, decades away before it's accomplished? And so oftentimes, I really challenge for goal and mission effort to take those big hairy things you're choosing to do and unbundle them into incrementalization, into incremental pieces. Take them apart enough so that on your watch, you can talk about what seeds you planted, what parts of that effort you went about, and celebrate that achievement, that baton pass to carry it on. That's a powerful thing to do and encourage you and the staff to always think about as many of the strong things you're looking to do, how can you cause them to be incrementalized so you get the big lifts, but you do that in parts and phases, and you can celebrate the achievement of those. You can articulate and you can communicate those as well to the community that those have been accomplished and we're one step closer to that. We're one step closer to that. Obviously, still keeping that in front of you, what's the mission? What's the final outcome? But importantly is these incrementalizations of that. That's the fifth one under goal-setting. An important thing under our democratic process is this next one. Representation and participation. Boy, did I hear a lot of that. But I would tell you, seeking rich input is a real mark of an effective council and governance group because you're looking to make sure that seven opinions are really the result of a whole collective community that you've been asked to represent. Sometimes that's structured by districts and responsibilities and wards and all kinds of other things. Different communities approach those different ways. But the importance there is a continued seeking of rich input and seeking the fullest definition of community. So who have we not heard from? Who is not, who's missing in this conversation? I heard that mentioned, and I would tell you, that's an important part of continuing to seek your understanding of community. Another dimension of this is to ask you, who are your constituents? I love doing that exercise. If we had time, we would do that. It's kind of like, name your constituents. And you could start out by the people in your neighborhood, the people that voted for you, the citizens of our community, et cetera. Two that I always find sometimes missing are these two. What about your three-minute customers? We were estimating that probably it's a quarter of a million folks that run up and down 35E on a given day. Do you know for four minutes, they're your constituents, they're your customers? I know that a couple Saturdays ago, with the wreck out there and the other things that happen like that, they are your customers. Ask the fire department. They'll tell you who they serve. They serve, so your adding up would be, we serve this many people that by night live in this community, by day live in this community. And by the way, we also have this many commuters that on 121 and on 35E are our three-minute customers. Another one there, and I always like to put this one in here, finance department told me to do it, was the bondholders. Yeah, yeah, yeah. They're the people that loaned Lewisville money to do the things they're going to do. And people sometimes forget that. And guess what? If you look at the fine print, guess who gets to stand in the front of the line? Bondholders. Because it says that they have first lien on property taxes. They have first lien on property taxes. So certainly, power of a triple A bond rating and other things to say, we get you. And that's your love note back to the investors every year is we get you. Because that's an important part of this idea of who is your constituents. They are your constituents. They are watching you. They have trained, very professional people watching the city all the time. Not just the once-a-year rating review time, every day, every newspaper article, they're taking an impression from that. This last one's important. And it's been fun to listen and watch and hear and learn of the forums and the places that you cause people to be gathered in. And I say this because this is an important dimension of community. And that is, do you see yourself in community? It's not an abstract thing. I saw everyone gathered. I saw them in different places and gatherings. And so the power of, the experience of community by being in community is huge. Boy, did we miss that during COVID. It was a whole thing to kind of be into an abstract thing. Thank God, technology came along. We all learned the word Zoom, had never heard of that before, et cetera. But the point is, we tried to create some proxy for that because it was important to us to make sure we still saw each other. The physicality as best we could, and certainly now, the physicalness of being back in community. Having a rich way that you think about all kinds of forums, formal and informal, for the community to see itself in community, and creates on occasion facilities or events that cause a community to be gathered. That is a sign of a healthy governance. It says, I am looking to make sure that there is a good balance of folks able to see and work and be together. Place is often a piece of that as well. So that's number six, the importance of representations and participations. Number seven, very related to this, is the idea of engagement and communication. An important dimension of your governance is this idea, not only of causing there to be forums and settings for that, but actually doing all kinds of connectivity with that community. Obviously, a very robust set of languages and message types. And heard a great, coincidental, I had helped prepare this for Claire, and then I heard this wonderful presentations about outreaches and communication, about this idea of a poly-linguistic, so many different ways that we can speak to you and speak to your interests and needs, but this passive and active ways to make people feel connected and be connected. And then certainly from all of that then are what are your essential messages as governance? What are we, you know, when we pick a thousand different things, what are we trying to over and over and over say? Patrick, I heard you mention kind of, sometimes it's about simplified messages. Sometimes you get so many going, and it's about concentrating or maybe using all those forms, but repeat, repeat, just, here's our core messages each time. Boom, boom, boom. This is what we're about. This is what we're trying to hit. Essential messages. Beware of the possibility of disenfranchising people. You know, my mom in her latter years, there's people that are not as tech, so putting all your eggs in certain kinds of mediums and message baskets can be a little tricky sometimes. You're doing it out of efficiency. You're trying to meet the masses. But I would warn you and beware of the idea of when you think about that, that you may be disenfranchising folks that aren't quite as media savvy or don't have a robust internet or whatever else. Or thinking about proxies through the library or other places where you can shore that up, and they too can be aware of and be involved in that. So offer these efforts around this area of engagement and communication. This next one is accountability and transparency. This is a dimension of stewardship and all kinds of other efforts of being an officer, et cetera. But broken out on its own, it's about this duty to inform. If you go to a trust instrument of any bank or legal or financial institution, they have a duty to report and tell you what they did with your money. And I think this idea of the importance of those efforts, certainly highly covered a minute ago in oversight, this importance of being informed and the status reports of how we're doing financially, goal accomplishments, all kinds of other stuff, are an important dimension that you have, and you should, as governance, celebrate and embrace robust ways that the community's resources are accountable back to the community for what's occurred from them. And in some cases, what value add, what could kind of, not only, we didn't lose your money, but we multiplied your money. We made things happen more and better accordingly to that. It's an ongoing tone, is it not yours but theirs? And certainly that idea of this accountability to them. And I mentioned here this idea of transparency, not only in outcomes, but transparency in process. And sometimes this idea of workshops and other kinds of considerations are also as important to make sure that they understand how the final outcome came to be. Not that you just robustly talked about that, but they can appreciate processes. That more and more people are wanting to understand process and values and such before they, you know, yes, we'll get to the punchline. I just want to hear, is it a, because they're going to judge the outcome as by the process. Did the process, does it represent all of us? Was it timely? All the other dimensions that go into that. So important to be transparent in process and in outcomes and always to think about that as you go forward as well. These days in time, you know, I could have used the word civility, but I would just tell you, it's about honorable conduct. In these settings and such, your emphasis and expectation on ethical conduct, not only of yourself, your advisory boards, your staff, everyone, but the importance of that slash civility on behalf of agreeing to disagree, having points of view, having this time where we're going to listen to everybody and do real listening, those kinds of steps. All of those are dimensions of honorable conduct. The integrity of each person coming in front of you and involved with you, that they are not discounted and they are given their honor. You should expect it from everyone. You should expect it among yourself. You should, and really hold each of you yourselves accountable for that, and certainly expect it from those that come to you. And really maintain that this forum will not be blemished by that. We will preserve and maintain that efforts here. And then think about what rules and engagement or other efforts you would offer and require to preserve that dignity and respect and fairness and meet the community. Could be, again, sometimes the art of presiding, the art of pausing the meeting, the kind of thank you for that, but wait a minute, you know, what you do to make sure it does stay in that kind of fashion. Honorable conduct. This final one is a reminder to you that for those many days as you want to serve, et cetera, this is an ongoing effort. And I submit to you that the keeping the long view is a huge, important part of your mission. This idea of carrying on and legacy-making can really only happen by you perfecting the technique of baton passing. And would submit to you that the second law of thermodynamics is that things are always changing and uninterrupted things are always deteriorating. That certainly is going to be about your assets, but it's also about people wearing out and having done their time and/or aging out, you know, with due respect. And so the point is simply is this idea of not only making today great, but how are we making this legacy great? And by doing that is how are we beginning to start thinking about as a governance, making sure that this has a dimension of sustainability, just like we talked about sustainability in all these other ways. So therefore, how are you trying to make sure that you have junior leadership that's exposed to this thing? Think about your journey becoming involved with the city. Who invited you in? Or how hard was it for you to be engaged? How have you shared the passion of what you do with somebody that you would be, feel comfortable if you had to stop today and you had to hand that baton pass off? Who might you do that to? And if you can't think about those kind of people, take that perhaps on as a mission. You're not trying to create a regime. You're trying to let the people do their thing. You're just trying to cultivate the power and the importance of governance itself so that key missions and processes, yes, products, but that processes and good governance can continue to roll on, not merely under this moment of Camelot, because those come, but they can go. So how do you try to keep them always coming and always involved in the next efforts that can be well that way? I think you think about that. I want to introduce a word to you that planners sometimes bump into, but many folks don't otherwise do. You've heard of a ghost town. You've heard of, you know, there's cities today, and there's cities that were once here that aren't here anymore. And those are called extinct cities. They're not here. They're called ghost cities as a nickname, right? The opposite of that is a city that's called an extant city. E-X-T-A-N-T. Extant city. Look it up sometime. And these are cities that have always been here, that have always been here. And I found that to be an interesting kind of discovery. And I kind of go, well, what is the opposite of this? And you go kind of Google it up and find it out. And kind of go, these are extant cities. And you Google that up at your own leisure, and you'll start reading off the names of cities that have been around tens of thousands of years, tens of thousands of years and are there today. So you, in a kind of a weird city manager kind of way, I kind of go, I would love to go talk to the Public Works Director of Jericho. Would that not be a fascinating conversation? Jericho is one of those cities that seems to have always been here. So I mentioned that to you because in a way, in a way, you kind of go, well, Dan, that's, that's old times. And no, no, but they're here today. And they were, they navigated this, 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 and this, and/or maybe got mowed down, but built back up. Whatever they did to stay resilient and to really have met such a time that they're even listed as an extant city. But you realize that that outcome or that verdict today is a result of a daily judgment of choices that are made that guide us towards the eventuality of that, because it's a step, it's like anything else. We travel only one step at a time. And so for you, thinking about that is what are we doing every day in Lewisville to make sure that we're on the path towards extant destiny and not towards extinction? And it's sometimes advocacy and defense. Sometimes it's making those renewal and reinvestments. Sometimes it's kind of just digging down because we just got kicked and we're going to have to figure out how do we get back up and keep going? All of those things. But this idea of figuring out for yourself, what is it going to look like? The tactics of our succession, the tactics of our resiliency, and certainly our tactics of our rejuvenation are an important dimension that begin with your attention to it in your governance on behalf of delivering clear messages and budget prioritization, et cetera, to the staff, to the community to help achieve those kinds of efforts. So Mayor, I've speed talking here a little bit. We didn't, we kind of truncated a little bit of reaction time, but I wanted to make sure that I offered to you 10 items. But really, over this slide and the next slide, want to pose to you perhaps a work plan. First of all, I want you to just take this in as the confirmation of what it might be to you. But out of that, perhaps a future thing for yourself is, do you agree with this list? Is this the 10 that you would come up? Was it missing anything? Would you add to that? All those are possibilities. And certainly beyond that, this idea of taking this from a checklist, yes, we're good in that. Okay, Dan, we got 10 checks. Moving it from a yes, no, because just like in a car repair and stuff like that, you kind of go, yes, oil level, good, you know, tire pressure, good, all those kind of things. Actually, it could be that you begin to start studying and thinking about under some of these dimensions, what gradient would you say you're at? And what are best practices or better practices that you might put in front of yourself to say, you know, what, what might we want to work on that not only turns it into a binary yes or no, but actually is kind of like, we're good. Could we be better? Could we do something? What would be the next realm? All those kind of things that begin to explore this idea of how do you take these key dimensions and do that? Because at the end of the day, the governance really starts with us. So again, you know, the growth opportunities, anything to explore, enrich, or enhance. Is there anything that you would dig deeper? Yes, I saw three things, but boy, I'd want to add these other dimensions, particularly if you turn this into an accountability exercise or a performance review of yourself. But again, this idea of we look outward, do we ever look inward and kind of check ourselves and kind of go, wow, how are we doing? Are we doing the best we are? Didn't you ask those questions every moment over this last day of the staff? And all they say in a Janus kind of thinking is, how would you turn that face and that viewpoint to yourself and kind of go, it begins with us. And so how are we doing on hitting on our best cylinders, all of our cylinders in that regard? And perhaps choose one, dig deeper, et cetera. I plant this as a idea and a seed. I plant this as a idea and a seed, only because I'm really struck that I don't find that there's a lot of communities and councils that get good instructions. They don't, it didn't come with instructions. It's a kind of an osmosis, yes, you have your charter, but I tell you, if you only did your charter-based duties, many of these things would not be on such a thing. But they absolutely are part of a governance concept like that. So I'd like to pause here for a second, Mayor, see if there's any reaction to that. Obviously, we have another big mission here in just a minute, but get any kind of cumulative or a personal reaction from anybody on this topic.
Council, love to hear some input.
You know what? I've got to say, being on this council now versus 30 years ago when I was on the council, and I work with some good people, okay, things were different, obviously. I mean, we thought we were in high cotton when we got a pager that actually had text on it. And throughout the community as a whole for the last 30 years, I may have not ran or been on council, but I was doing other things. And these are so important. Coming back on and working with this group of people, and I told this to you already, that, and nothing against anybody else, but collectively, out of all the groups that I've set on boards, commissions, and the city before and stuff like that, as a team, as a whole city of Lewisville family, it's by far platinum. It's been the greatest. Now, as far as a deliberating body, I wish everyone had a chance to be a part of a governance like this, because there's not one of us that think alike, which is a good thing, actually, you know, because of TJ. But we all, every single one of us brings a different tool to the chest, and we can agree like the best of them, but we're the best dysfunctional family around, because once it's done, it's deliberated, it's voted on, I can turn around and say, good job, I'll see you tomorrow. And that's it. Nobody has a personal agenda here. Everybody has put in so much time and has studied everything. And like his motto and mantra has always been, you got to show up. You have to show up. And this team has shown up. This is by far the greatest that I've ever had a chance of working with. So everything, they all meet these checkboxes.
So I like, I like the presentation of this. I'm a checklist kind of guy. I like things to be orderly. I'm a tech guy by background, so, you know, things that flow make a lot of sense. I will say, something did strike me, though, and I wanted to call this out specifically, kind of along the same line as Councilwoman Kate over there. I've heard everybody probably say, boards and commissions are the minor leagues to getting up into, into council. This has been said over and over again. I've heard this, actually, before I even got on council. So the recognition that we're at a point in time and not the be-all, end-all, I think is worth mentioning here.
Thank you. In fact, if anything, if you care about the time you spent now, you should be caring about that, because when, because kind of, can it, can it keep on spinning when you're out of the room? If we're mixing metaphors right and left here, but that's a huge thing, and I would say, Patrick, that reinforces that very much.
Oh, the thing I was going to bring up is, I'm looking at the list, and I think we do pretty well. The one thing I just want to recognize is, like, you brought up the passing of baton, and that's, that's a reference that I always use, is basically, we're running, we're running around a track, and we're eventually going to pass the baton off. And the city will hopefully be better than it was when we picked it up. But I just want to recognize those that handed the baton off to us, you know, Mayor Durham, Mayor Euclid, and I think TJ was on the council then, and various different council groups that helped to get us to where we are, you know, how we got to City Hall in Old Town, how we got Old Town together. All these things are connected. And I think the one unique thing about the councils that I've been on is that it's been about the work, not the individual, not giving speeches, not what the next office is going to be. It's just about getting the job done, what's best for the city. It's not a solution that's conservative or is liberal, it's the right solution. And with that, with that mindset, that it allows us to get stuff done. Yes, we have disagreements, but we get, we like, when we make a decision, we move forward and we get, we get, do what's best for the city. So I just wanted to make, I think we hit on all of those points, but it's not just us, it's been a buildup and accumulation, and not just of councils, but of staff, too. So I just want to make sure that we recognize that.
Thanks, Brian.
I was just also, first of all, I'm a list maker as well, so I really appreciate the list. And I will say that this, when I look at the list, I think, you know, there are definitely times where I could say, you know, I personally, I have, I've thought about every one of these things, some of those, sometimes, some of those things I could have been better at. But also knowing that, you know, we participate in a process where we have to make decisions, and sometimes those decisions are hard, and sometimes, I feel like more frequently, we're having to make decisions where somebody's going to be upset about the decision that we make. And so what I can appreciate about the list is, you know, kind of a documentation of the process of all the things that had to be considered within that decision-making process, and hopes that, you know, if, if we follow these, this checklist and these bullet points, and we're, we're paying attention to, we've got the right appointments in place, where we've got all of our bases covered, we're being transparent and accountable, and we're communicating, my hope would be that even if we end up making a decision that maybe somebody doesn't agree with, either on this council or in the public, that they can appreciate the process and say, I feel comfortable that even though the outcome was not what I wanted, that the, I appreciate and respect the process.
I was heard, and it was factored.
Absolutely.
I hear that. Two places, if I could react to that very quickly, was earlier when we talked about the planning and the powerful step of planning that hopefully helps build consensus after you have an input and intake. And Ronnie, to your point, the idea that the diversion of deliberation that has all points of views considered before the punchline vote, is that chance to have been heard and to have been factored so that, so that it happens that way. So, yeah, there are some powerful things in here that aren't going to necessarily take away the sting of final outcome of that. But as any decision's making, you know what, you do that in your own life, when you make a budget list of things you'd like to do and want to do and have to do, as an example. And certain things get off that, like, we're not going to go on that trip. I'm sorry. Now, when it starts really wrestling with the basics, that gets to be tougher decisions. Sometimes those are your choices, too, and that's not pretty, is the worst, choosing among the worst things. My school district in Richardson right now is saying, we're having to have the conversation we didn't want to have to have, and that is, closing schools. So I would say that that's, that's that challenge, yeah.
Right, right.
And I'll say, I'm a big on checklist, I probably create checklist on top of checklist, and I go and reevaluate the checklist, and then go back to the checklist. So, but, so I like this kind of, you know, thing, a couple things I took out of this was, one was the advisory, advisory board appointments. I take those very seriously. Every year, I go through, analyze those, I call people. I think that's huge importance, especially to the future. Some other things I took, the breaking the big list down into incremental pieces, I think that's, that's, that's an important task there. I think you need to take small points and then, you know, look at them that way.
You can't eat an elephant if you try.
The poly-linguistic thing I thought was interesting, that you're coming on that, with, I just think that definitely fits Lewisville real well. Transparency, obviously, we're, you know, Lewisville's big about transparency, you know, we've got over 10 different things on our transparency, on our website about that. And if after the freeze we had, if we're not an extant city, I don't know what.
Everyone that thought became a little bit more extant.
But we're certainly an extant city after that, trust me.
Good, thank you. Yeah.
I'll just say, I'm not a big list maker myself. I do appreciate this list. I always appreciate seeing lists. I don't, don't necessarily make them myself, but this has been very informative, and thank you.
Thank you, thank you for that. Yeah, good.
I'll throw a couple in here, Dan, just to cherry on the top of it. I am not a list maker by intuition, I'm a list maker by necessity. I've already tried to figure out how to collapse this into three overarching themes and how they link together.
Yes.
What, and I want to kind of maybe focus a bit as to where I see opportunities in this list for the city. We do, I mean, I started this whole march years ago based on transparency. I started live blogging, and that culture and that ethos, it wasn't that the city was poor at it, it was the city had not seen some of the newer tools that I was used to as a younger folk at that time. And it's happening today with my kids, right? They're starting to go, well, why aren't you doing this? And so that transparency and accountability, we just keep notching it up in this city. Whether people look at it or not, it's there. But, so that's where I started. But now I'm in this place where, you know, how do I figure out how to get more representation? I think, I think we do an amazing job within the four walls. I think we really work hard to get the folks outside plugged in, but, but I think we can all agree that there are communities in our, in our Lewisville that aren't as engaged or representative as, as we need them to be. And we haven't found the secret sauce. So I think that's a space where, you know, we might be riding at a seven or an eight in what we're doing, but we definitely have another level to go on that one. Then there's, there's, to me, there's a lot of opportunity there as we continue to try and find out how to find people where they're at and bring them on board. And then that absolutely ties into the succession, resilience, and rejuvenation of the city. Where are those untapped sources of human capital that we can, we can bring to the table to help us grow even further? So for me, that's where I spend a lot of my thought, is, is how do I get that next person? How do I get that next advocate, that raving fan? I've been on dysfunctional boards. I've rage-flipped an organization. It is not fun, and we do amazing jobs here, making sure that that doesn't happen. This council doesn't make decisions unless we've seen it two or three times. And a lot of folks, if you're watching this, if you've watched city council meetings, we don't have a whole lot of split votes. You know why? Because we've seen it multiple times.
We do our homework.
We do our homework, and staff knows where we need to be to be able to get consensus on ideas.
Different ideas, actually, with good feedback, can have staff be challenged to kind, can you blend a better solution?
Right, right. And so, I think, right now, we are, we are running, I hate to give a 10, because I don't want people letting off the gas, but we are right at that nine, five stars, whatever we're going to call it. But for me, as I move forward, I would hope that we really continue to figure out what are those best practices, who's having a win, how can we take the wins that we have with representation, like our Chin community, and how do we leverage that into other communities that we have not, we have not had the chance to really get their, their piece of the stew put in. So that's, that's, thank you for the insight. I appreciate this list, it's handy.
Well, the power of a surgeon is, how many are they going to do a day, a week, a month, a year? And yet you'll use a checklist every time, because all it's going to take is that one time. And so, I offer to you the power of this checklist, and certainly to be amended and customized to your benefit, certainly with the detailing that you talked about, and certainly quest-wise, figuring out which ones might have an enrichment or a next effort to go in that. So perhaps it's a work session or a conversation time you have this next year, maybe once a year, as you're doing an evaluation of everyone else, you kind of go, you know what, we're going to take a few minutes and make sure we're evaluating ourselves.
This is a really good framework.
Fun, it was. It was, and I appreciate a lot of folks that helped me over time, because this was just a collection by talking candidly to a lot of elected officials and kind of going, what, what instructions did you get? What were you missing? And so, over time, I've kind of cobbled this together.
What would be interesting is to add a little thing there that is, is a, not us evaluating ourself, but like, an evaluation from our manager on us.
Like, like a 360.
A point of view, exactly.
Be careful, because Claire will tell you exactly what she thinks.
You know what I mean?
And then you gotta talk her for three days.
And I think that we need to start down there.
Oh.
Okay, but I will say that.
I did not see this coming.
Yeah, really. I would like to say that.
I was going to say, Patrick is very humble, and every single one-on-one, he asks me what I can do better, and I'm very honest with him.
But you're open.
And she just calls me, and she says, Ronnie, what now?
The, the attitude and flavor of that, of that comment, I just want to freeze-frame that, because I think that's a very powerful thing. The points of view, part of this whole theme of this retreat, was about, there are points of view about you. And you kind of, well, I don't want to hear that. I mean, it's our job to be pointing, viewing out, we just, we just always point everywhere, and I'm kind of going, I'm just going to say, those kind of, what, four fingers pointing back at yourself, et cetera. The importance of being open to this. This is a, this is, I mean, that, the invitation was made to offer this, there's not a, many retreats at all that would do this, to kind of say, there's a point of view that says, how are you all doing? Or is there, do you plant a seed about how you can do? So you got to be an attitude open to that, and you got to be ready to take that from what? Informally, from the community, perhaps in structured ways. But in fact, this idea of just make sure that the checklist is a point of reminder. Maybe this is a forum for that, so you won't wander, et cetera. But thank you for that, Ronnie, yeah. Mayor, that pretty well, I think, was the, oh, by the way, I want to thank you for your service.
Thank you for yours.
Glad to do it. I am always motivated, and I bet you this office is, too, to watch the intensity of care that I've witnessed the last day or so. I'm not on my last wrap-up. Mayor, we got one other thing to do here, but I would just say, I'll just say very quickly, that I have been hugely impressed, and I would say, the deliberation and consideration through the one-on-ones I had with you, and as well as this, this is an amazing organization. Thank you. Shall we go on?
All right. I think, I think we're good to keep, keep going on.
Well, let's then build a 24-25 strategic focus area work plan. If it's, if we're going to do this well, I think it'll be by you each having out in front of you, two sets of worksheets, your green and salmon coral, pardon me, coral-colored sheet.
You know me about the color, I got this.
I think the first answer, this is a two-step process, but really it's one. The first one is confirming the pieces. So we'll review any kind of reaction notes and other things you have in that regard. But from that is this sort and filter consideration, that I ask you to put on a really interesting and critical filter strategy around this. And again, you could be playing to different audiences and everything else. I want you to play to an important audience, though, and that is your city manager. And this is about where to devote resources and times in the most intensive way for this next year. By the way, you're doing this every year, so this isn't a matter for all times. This is a matter that in resources and budget development and time allocations and what Claire's dialogue needs to be with you, with the community, with the council, where do we make sure that we put that most intensive amount of work in the focus world, not in the overall, necessarily in the overall general mission of the city? You do have currently nine items in that regard, and all along has been asking features and attributes about that, that you would have those well-understood. The question, is there anything else to add and build? We have nominated or put up at least two briefing items that you had asked to have deep, deep background and research on, hence the salmon-colored sheet that you also have there as well. Out of that is really trying to come up with for today, not trying to regurgitate all the conversations from yesterday. Now it's punchline time. At the end of the day, how is it that Claire and the team need to understand focus, this very intensive, high resource, high dialogue, high attention to that, mission, and certainly, if needed, call it drop, and I want to give you that option. But again, let you think about that, this F, M, or D, right, for each item.
Patrick, can you give me just a little more direction on the difference between focus and mission?
You bet. And I have Claire add to that, too. In fact, Claire, you heard the question. You want to start with that? Just kind of, what would be helpful to you as it being a focus or a mission?
Yeah, so for me, I think we're really trying to build this as, from a budget year, right? And it helps inform us when we're trying to determine resources for action steps going forward, and also for time allocation from our staff, is going forward, and also for time allocation from our staff, is, is, do you want the next year, and I think some of the information we gave you in the first day and this morning will help you kind of determine, what are our next steps? Is there going to be a big lift in the next year, either personnel-wise or financial-wise, where you really want us to put, push the gas on it, or is it, hey, we're pretty, we're good right now, let's just, let's elevate? And I don't, I don't think it's a demotion. It's an elevation to mission. So, focus is, hyper-focus this year on this. We need to put gas, hit the gas on it. Mission to me is, it's just as equally as important, if not more important, but it needs to be, continue to be part of the fabric of what we're working, working on. I will also say that, we've said this in why we started doing the prioritization, and now we're calling it the focus strategy, the strategic focus areas, is that part of strategy is the ability to not say yes to everything at the same time, right? And so, it has been immensely impactful for our team to have these, so that we can really focus on achieving. And you've seen what, we were able to achieve, like, for example, affordable housing. I've been very pleased in all the things we've done with affordable housing over the last year. But it's because we've taken such a detailed focus on that, because council told us it was that important. So, with that, my preference is to stay with nine. There is no rhyme or reason with nine versus 10 versus 11, but if we add one every year for strategic focuses, it's, it's going to stop being actually a focus area at that point.
Patrick, does that help?
Yeah, just for clarity, if we went through and we said, say, for example, I'm just picking one at random, that's just a random here. If we said, drop, 10-minute walk to park, that doesn't mean we're not going to do it. That just means that it is part of the ongoing day-to-day work that we're doing as part of running the city. Does that mean--
I would interpret that as mission. You're moving it over to mission.
Yes. I would say you would call it mission, because you're not wanting to drop it altogether.
That's why I want to make sure. So, drop means, forget about it.
Drop is either ask and answered, and, okay, it was an inquiry more--
Or we've achieved everything you want us to achieve. We're done with work on.
Okay, fantastic. All right. Thank you.
And Patrick, I'm kind of thinking this in terms of fuel or money.
That's good.
So, if, do I want us putting more money into this item? That, to me, is a focus. Do I want us maintaining what we've got today, or putting it at a, it's part of the, it's part of what we do, but it's not something that I'm dumping more or trying to accelerate? Then that, to me, is moving it into the mission. Drop is, this has been wrong, we got to, we got to move it out, in my head. So, or we got to reduce budget on that. So, I've got a couple in here where I'm okay with reducing budget on, because I want to pick that budget and push it somewhere else. So we're actually doing the same thing. I just want that focus, and I'll give the example, I want that focus off of Old Town, because I feel like there's plenty of fuel there, and that it's going to self-propel itself. I need that focus dropped into 121 corridor. So, so that we can have in the 121 corridor what we've had in Old Town. But that's, that's, that's how I'm looking at--
This is great calibration. What you're doing right here is calibrating how, and then, Mayor, you'll add to that by listening to all this and helping me interpret consensus.
Yeah, and that doesn't mean I don't like Old Town. I love Old Town.
No, 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 no.
And, but, but we're there, in my opinion. So, does that, does that help?
Yes, yes. That's, that's great. So, kind of with that calibration, et cetera, all this obviously is, again, building to this new 24-25 strategic focus areas. Here are the nine, and then down below are just the two that were the Claire reports that were added. I'm going to convert this, if you will, with Melissa's assistant, actually, into a worksheet to have it not go away, but, she will, it will fire up again here in a second, and will be in a mode where, I guess, starting at one end or going to the other. And again, this is not vote. This is about, though, articulating a, a comment that you would make around this, that would be in these kind of realms of comment, that the mayor and I could interpret as a summation, because at the end of the day, we speak with one voice, and we speak with one pin. So, everyone's already in the midst of working on the workshops. It is good. So, Mayor, with that, you can see the cursor up there. Yeah, in fact, let's just kind of pause for a half a second. Brandon, you got a question, or you just--
No, I just--
You're ready to roll. You're ready to roll.
My family feud over here. The one thing I added in there, like, the drop was kind of like, okay, one thing, I kind of added to the background, because there's some things on this list that, that are working in the background, but it's taking time, like mall redevelopment is one of them. I mean, there's not much focus we can put on it, and it's a mission, but I'm like, it's more of a background that's going to be--
That strikes me as being a mission-type response, because, and Brandon's bringing up a point, is do you sense that it has, even beyond our best efforts, it's going to be an energy point, it's going to be a focus this next year by factors that are beyond your control? And if it's a matter of, and something's kind of in a hold-it or in a kind of an idle mode, then it's maybe not a focus at the moment. You could push harder, but you're not going to get it to go anymore. You heard Brandon's question regarding the mall. So, when that chat comes up, recall that comment, and we'll figure out whether or not the consensus is, there is perception that something can be still a focus piece on that, or perhaps that's one that moves to a mission. So that we really end up having the Fs, or the focus items, be by whatever number it is, the things that Claire and the team have as the best understanding going forward. So again, Mayor, you can see the cursor there, sitting there on the first one up there. And if you would help guide with me, just the conversation around this, to gain either a quick consensus of what that number, that letter is, or whether or not there needs to be dialogue on that, Mayor?
So, council, and I'll just, I'll just lead, because that, at least the first one, we kind of have an example. On affordable housing, I, I think we can, we continue to do it. The housing study says we need it, but I would really like our emphasis to be on the maintaining and existing, the maintenance and existing stuff, and then how do we maybe find more opportunities for senior housing? I'm not as much interested in new. We've got a bunch of new coming. I want to figure out how we keep the existing on the rolls the way it is. So that, so, it's, it for me is a focus, but I want to focus on a particular aspects of it. So--
Some commentary, but still an F, a focus.
Yeah, yeah. Was that, so that's, that's how I'm approaching this one. And we're not, again, this is consensus building, so I just, we need to kind of have a, have an idea, where, where is council on the affordable housing piece? Do we, do we want to add fuel to it? Do we think we're doing well, or do we need to, you know, if we think we're doing well and keep it as a mission, or do we want to back off of it?
I think we, I think we're doing well. I will say that when we first started talking about it, my hope was that we were going to get a lot more focus on the rehab than what we have. And that's a lot of, there's been lessons learned this last year. I think we can take those and really push it to where we, we, or at least, I'll say I, for now, because I'm the second one to speak.
Speaking.
But I really want to focus on rehab versus new.
So F with this conversation about the rehab dimension?
Correct.
Good.
See, I would--
I'll, I'll jump in next. I agree, it's definitely a focus item. At this point, I would love to see rehab, but, you know, we need to, we need to talk to developers and see how that works. I, right now, at this level, I wouldn't want to put, I get what we're doing, trying to guide through conversation forward, but I don't want to put our folks in a, in a bind, like, just look for this. I'm like, get what's best, maybe prioritize rehab, and let them work, but it's definitely a focus.
I was going a little bit different direction, because I think we've had a lot of focus on this in last year, and I was feeling like we could move it into the mission. Now it's just part of what we're doing. We're trying to actualize all the focus that we had last year. Now, I'm an asterisk by that, politicians do that sometimes, and say that I could see breaking out affordable housing rehab into its own, into its own area and focus on that. Maybe splitting hairs, but I do think that's worthy of thinking about it by itself.
Can I clarify one thing on that?
Yeah.
So, when we have these topics that we've got up here, we also, staff at the next council meeting, or the meeting after that, whenever we can get it finalized, we also bring a paragraph of what we thought you mean by when you say affordable housing. So it's real clear. We make sure that you guys approve that as a council. And so, if, if the interest, if, and I don't know where council all lands on this, but if it is in rehab, that paragraph can be very clear, and that's where the focus you want us to be on.
That's where, this is where your notes are going to help you--
Right.
--on articulating the, the piece of that. Go.
I think affordable housing, right now, in the last two, three years, it's really been a hard pill to swa-- well, there's been no pill out there to swallow, because I don't think that there's anything that's really affordable right now. So that's why I'm keeping it a focus, but there are subsets underneath that. So, like, senior housing, we're, they're getting evicted, because, you know, they're, they're rolling off tax exemptions, stuff like, or the, y'all know what I'm talking about. So I've got that as a focus.
I also got that as focus, again, as far as rehab and, and also maintaining existing what we already have, especially Evergreen.
I definitely want to see it as a focus. Specifically, I guess, I would go with the rehab and, and existing. But I think we also want to make sure that any new, any new developments include affordable. So, I want to see affordable all the, all around.
Good, okay.
All right. I think we've got a consensus on that one, with focus.
Melissa, will you pop in the magic F? Okay, very good. Let's go to the next one.
All right. Let's go ahead and take a look at the infinite diversity and infinite combinations section.
So, for this one, like, that's why I didn't like the, really, the drop piece. I mean, I guess it's, it'll be a mission for us, but for me, I was like, it's always something that's going to be in the background. It's not something, I think we've done a lot, which there's still things to tweak, but I don't think it's necessarily a focus. I think we're doing all the right things. We just need to keep it going. So, mission, I guess, would be the--
I concur. I concur. Mission, mission for me, I think it's part of our way, so.
Any others? Mission, mission? Yeah. I think, let's, this, this is one of those that permeates our systems, much like sustainability. It's, it's hard to have this thing out by itself, because then it doesn't necessarily make the impact. You know, it's, it's like peanut butter sauce and ice cream. It's much better when you mix it in the ice cream than you just drop it on top. Yeah, no, peanut butter chocolate, it's, it's a thing.
We could talk about that.
Yeah, yeah, offline. So, for me, and I think we're there, and I think we have tools in place that are measurable, which is important, and I think we have a whole bunch of things that we've checked--
That's right.
--that we are implementing and have implemented that are, that are moving the needle. So, if we get to a point where that needle's no longer moving, then this is something where I think we need to maybe bring it back up.
Shift it back to focus, but that's the power of using appropriation of your time and resources correctly. So, Mayor, I'd get a consensus M on that one.
I think we do that. Mall redevelopment, council?
Focus.
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 Moving on. Lake District.
Focus.
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 Moving on. Focus.
They're getting, they're getting the hang of this, Mayor.
Old Town Development.
Mission. We've come so far. We've got steps in place.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. I got a mission?
Yeah, I agree. I know, and I'm just going to say this one, because you use this one as an example. I wrote mission. This one, for me, is somewhere in between. I know, Mayor, you mentioned that maybe it's a drop. For me, it's somewhere in between there. I do think, I think this is something that we clearly, we have put a lot into, and we've done a lot of work here. And I do think that we are in a place where it's starting to take off itself without that assistance, but I don't think it's quite ready to go all by itself. So I think we're somewhere in between mission and drop.
Yeah, that, that's why I put in like, either background or, you know, I put it, I did the politician thing. I added something to it.
Add subcategories. All right. Others on Old Town, before we move on, it sounds like mission is, is getting consensus.
Got that one? Okay.
All right. Employee recruitment, development, retention?
Mission. I think we've come so far, we've done so much, and now, you know, it's, we expect. It's a mission, because I'm still working on the retirement.
I see mission as, as, I see it as a mission. It's, this, this whole thing is part of our, like I said, it's part of the Louisville way now, so it's--
So, this is where, this is where it's difficult, right? Because this is, to say drop, that the word drop has a connotation to it that's very negative. And, you know, it comes down to, I was very impressed with what I saw for the employee recruitment and development that we have. It doesn't mean that we're not going to do it. It doesn't mean we won't invest in it. It's just, it's a part of the mission. I think we've accomplished a lot, and I can make an argument, I think, that using drop, as long as it doesn't mean stop doing it, it means it's, it's, it's on a sustainable path on its own, then I can, I can go with the drop.
I picked, I picked up, I think, informally, drop is being treated as a more severe thing. This idea of mission has been really almost a similar rationale treatment on a couple of these prior ones, and I would say that would achieve what you're after there, Patrick.
I would say mission plus, but with a focus on developing retention in the job market that we have now, where people are kind of leaving jobs. You know, we want to make sure we develop our staff, because what has helped maintain the Louisville way has been long-tenured employees who know the city. And so, we want to, that, I would just add that as a plus and a mission.
We have done a lot this past year when, in regards to recruitment, development, and retention. I would like to be able to take just a breather to make sure that that stuff is doing what we think it's doing. If I start throwing more on top of that, do I know, do I, do I have a measurable outcome? Do I know what created that? And I don't, I don't know--
Would you like me to tell you what created?
Right.
No, I won't do that, right?
Right, yeah. I don't want to, I don't want to pile on if, if we found, if we found the answer, if we're in good shape. Does that make sense?
Yes. I just wanted to, on that one, just for clarity purposes, so Tad had a, on his slide, looking forward, there are several things we have on the horizon this year we're going to be doing. And we've got the job family progressions, we've got bringing, you know, maintaining that we're still a lead city. And that's fine. We're, we're still planning to do that. I just want to make sure y'all are, okay?
Yes. That, that's, yeah, I'm not asking you to get rid of--
Should plus?
Yeah. I'm not asking you to get rid of any of the programs that you have. I, what, what I would not, what I'm not asking for is more stuff. I feel like, the feedback I'm getting, you know, our staffing is full. We've got, we're actually filling positions. I mean, I'm, I'm dealing with DCTA, and we're constantly having to go back and say, hey, no, our budget's wrong on this position. And so, if, if that's the case, if Tad's coming here and we start seeing that number drop again, and we're not getting the retention we need, and Tad comes back to me and says, no, we got to put some more gas on the fire, then, yeah, we'll have that conversation. But I'm not feeling like we're at a deficit at this point. I'm feeling like we just need to make sure that what we're doing is exactly what we think it's doing, right?
But we may need to add more stuff to it.
Yeah, we might come mid-year. I mean, they, we came mid-year for the budget correction--
That's right. So, it's, it's an M, it's an M-plus.
Yeah.
It's not an M--
Fair enough.
Minus one.
Okay. There we go. Gradients on the M. Okay, very good.
We got a whole statistical curve. We can use AI to figure that out. Awesome. Are we good there? We'll go ahead and move on to 10-minute walk.
I think that's a mission.
Yeah, I have that as mission as well.
Mission, mission, mission?
Mission.
I think, for me, that's, that is contingent on the bond. Because I, I mean, I don't, when I say, when I say mission, I mean, are we, we need parks. We need spaces. I mean, at this point, the low-hanging fruit is done. So, but if I don't have the bond money--
Yeah, so, I would, on that one, at least, challenge.
That's an FM. That doesn't make a plot, man.
I have that as focus.
And let me, let me just--
Well, yeah, let's hear your context for that.
I think that one probably should be, continue to be a focus, mainly because if you are, right now, we've taken the easy wins on the 10-minute walk to park. It's about to get a lot harder. So, for us to be able to actually achieve the goal that we're trying to say we're going to achieve, we're going to have to double down with LISD. We're going to have to access church properties to be able to do that.
Okay.
And then we're also hopefully going to get the bond election pass, so we can achieve all those things. But I, I do think there's a big lift coming up. It's probably a bigger lift than we've even had before.
It becomes a focus for me if the bond passes. If the bond doesn't pass, I don't know what to do there.
You'd probably rearrange tactics and talk about achievement there, but this is also about resources of staff and time, and your time, as to what workshops and settings and reporting back you're going to hear.
Yeah. And, and that one may be just a deficit of, in my mind, it might be a deficit of thinking, my thinking of, I, I tend to think of that more in a physical infrastructure concept, and if there's no money, there's no money, versus there's, there's the other components that I know Stacy's much better at than I am.
And stuff like that.
So, okay. So I'm, I'm hearing F.
I hear F, Mayor.
F minus?
F.
F? Okay, okay.
Simple L.
There we go.
That's got to be--
Infrastructure, yeah. Infrastructure, yeah. Infrastructure and facilities. F?
F.
F, 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 yeah. Core competency, F.
F.
Corridor 121.
F.
F. That's the next Old Town.
Since 2016.
Yep.
Now, we come to two that were breach, briefed to you, and the question is, are you struck that these have dimensions about that that might be worthy of this? I have a question mark on them, because until you want to acknowledge they're even in the ballpark, they aren't. So your thoughts about?
I think that.
So first of all, consensus, are, are both of these worth a letter?
Yes.
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 Okay. Moving on. Let's take a look at beautification initiatives.
Yeah.
If that's worth a letter, which letter is it worth?
F.
F?
That one is definitely an F.
F?
Can I, I just wanted to, I wanted to say something about that real quick. I definitely think it's, it's an F. And, you know, which, actually, going into this, before we had this discussion, I was not quite sure that that really would rise to the level of F. But I think that there, with all of the stuff that we're doing, and again, like we talked about yesterday, some of those things are marathon-type things. If we have a city that's got trash everywhere and is not maintained properly, that is a real morale killer for our residents. And if we can't get them excited about what we already have, they can't invest in what, you know, being a part of this community in the future, which is why I think that this is so important.
Yeah, I, I feel like this is, this is city infrastructure. This is not a nice-to-have or an extra. This is city infrastructure. And so if city infrastructure is important, then this is important. So that's, that's why I put that one as an F. So I think we're good. Any other comments?
Yeah, I had that as, again, I wish we had a mission plus or a mission, or a mission drop, but I had this kind of mission plus, but, to your point, I would almost want to break that into, into, into parts, because it seems like there's more parts of that that are more important than some of the other parts. Sorry. Than, than other parts, such as Texas Dot, Texas New Mexico Power, the stormwater thing. I think you could break out some pieces from that.
That's fair.
All right. And many of these things, as Claire mentioned, you'll have dimensional pieces of these, and the reporting and the tracking are going to be a lot of time in the subsets of those, but an overall.
We've got an overall F for that one.
F for that one? Okay, you're good with that.
And then public engagement, gang?
I'm going to, I'm going to say, if we're going to add them, and they're just being added, they both have to be F, because we can't, we can't, we can't make judgment calls about these until we get some focus on it, to understand what we have and where we want to go. So if we're going to add them, there has to be an F. That's by, that's my very black-and-white thinking about this sort of thing.
My thought on this, the public engagement piece was that it has to be an F, because we are, so next year is 2025, and we're going to be moving into our planning efforts for 2020, 2035. And I truly believe 2025 was the, the most input we've ever gotten from the public for one of our plans, and that is what has made that plan so good and so powerful. And so if we're going to start moving into the effort of putting together the 2035 plan, we need to, we need to reinvigorate our public engagement, so that we can get the benefit. Our next 10 years depends on it.
I would say this is definitely a focus. This has probably been on the brink for several years, so I think we, not that we're not doing it, I just think we just need to put a higher level to it.
Definitely. I feel definitely it needs to be a focus.
All right. So we've got focus for that one as well.
Focus for that as well. Mayor, would there be any others? Excuse me.
Yeah, that gives us eight focus areas.
Correct. Net eight.
And then three that we want to move into a mission role. Anything that we've missed, council? Anything that you feel like in the conversation over the last day and a half that maybe didn't get the focus that it needed, or that you'd like to maybe bring up as, as a conversation piece as we move down? We've, we've got time, but this, this workshop is to define budget, is to help define where, where that money's going to be focused this next year. So is there something that you'd like to bring up to the team or see a workshop on at some point?
Well, I, I mean, not necessarily that I want to get a workshop on, but I think kind of one of the unsaid things is that there is going to be an additional focus area that's not on this sheet, and it's the, it's the centennial, it's the 100-year celebration. That's going to be a big focus for next year. It'll be a, next year, and then that's it. And then, and then we can have one, we can drop next year.
That would be public engagement.
I'm talking specifically about what are we going to do to celebrate the, you know, the 100-year anniversary of Louisville.
I think, I think James gave us a lot of information, and the key word was try to get as much free help as we can get, but we will be spending some money on that. I think the list is enough, because what we're not counting on is what we don't see that's coming.